Call the City Council, special meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, Councilperson Vining?
Uh, she's excused.
Germani?
Here.
Lamore?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Echo Angeli?
He's excused.
Mayor Clark?
Here. I know it's not on there, but this is an official meeting, no special. I'd ask that we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, in your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and this evening's meeting as was scheduled because we have the opportunity first to review from the city management the fiscal year 2018-19 proposed budget. That's why we're here. Clerk LeHoy, if there's further you have for the agenda to start us.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is fiscal year 2018-2019 proposed budget.
Thank you. I was gonna ask you, should've asked you first, but uh... So with that, that is the agenda, and there's many items that to be reviewed. I know that the city administration, Mr. Pastu, will be presenting, as well as our Assistant City Attorney and Finance Director, Mr. Sell. So Vince, I'll just turn it over to you to get us started and we can get through this long process.
I've got 75, maybe 77 slides now to go through tonight, so we can take a quick order of it if we can. Part of it is to start, just to give you a little background with the way the format is going to work on the next slide, you know, certainly on the introductions. I'll, Ed is gonna talk a little bit about the process and the calendar. I'll do the first part of the general overview, and most of it's gonna be Ed for the rest of the evening, with me interjecting here and there on a few items, and then Mr. Barry Leroi, Utilities Director, talking about the water and wastewater budgets, and then the last Port Authority budgets, and then we'll have some opportunity for discussion as we go, so... Ed?
Okay. For the record, Ed Sell, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director. So we are presenting what will ultimately be placed on your agenda next week as for the first reading of the budget, and where this process has been so far is, the first step is for the City Manager, the HR Director, and the Finance Director to get together and set the personnel level, staffing levels, for the year, and based on that list of full and regular part-time positions, we then create a personnel budget, which then flows into the whole budget, and departments then are responsible for putting together a budget request and submitting it into our electronic system, and then the City Manager and I meet with most of the departments that we feel our meeting is necessary for. There's only a very small handful of departments that we don't meet with, but we do kinda tell them that what our budget recommendation is, and the main reason we don't meet with them is because the budget differences between what we're recommending and what they requested are pretty small, so that's the main reason for not having the meeting. But we do meet with all of them, and after that process is done, we finalize the budget, and now we're here to present it to the City Council. The first reading of the budget is scheduled for April 2nd, so that this, what you have on your desk there, one of the documents is a sample budget ordinance, and that is the format it'll be presented to you in as well. There'll be some other attached reports when you get it next week, but that's the main document you would ultimately be approving. So the, it'll be up on your agenda for the first reading on April 2nd, and April 16th, it'll be up for the second reading, the public hearing, and hopeful adoption. We can schedule, this is the only work session scheduled at this point. We can schedule others if the need arises, but the main goal here is that the budget by charter does need to be adopted by April 30th. As we go through the budget, we are looking into the future years and what we're gonna be budgeting for the city, but we're also looking at the current year as well, and getting a good baseline for where we think we'll be at the end of this fiscal year to go into other, the next future years. So this budget process does include a review of the current year, and included with what you will be approving in that budget ordinance is an amendment to the current year budget as well. We hope it's the last amendment for the fiscal year, but it also gets reviewed in June to see if there's any final adjustments that are needed before fiscal year end. The budget ordinance has the millage rates that you're gonna be requested to approve, it has the budget amounts that you're gonna be asked to approve, and some other operating procedures as well, in terms of things that the City Manager and/or I can do with the budget during the year in terms of transferring money around or any things like that. So those are all in there. It does include some of the capital amounts for the non-governmental type funds that the city does run. I think this, are you gonna take over, Vince?
Just a little background in structuring the proposed budget, some of the issues or the factors with its development. Clearly, the largest single issue out there affecting the proposed budget is, you know, DTE's taxable value challenge, both the short and long term. I'll talk a little bit about that as we go through some items. Certainly, there's a short-run, short-term issue regarding the valuation. The other part is the long term, dealing with the fact that the plant will eventually close probably in another 20 years, and how do we start moving the organization along that path so that when that arrives, that we are in a position where the services are sustainable and functional for our residents and businesses. The other aspect of it is, we went through the City Council goals and objectives, so we'll see a couple of points where we'll talk about some implementation of those. Development opportunities that abound here in the community, I think is important to take advantage while that opportunity is there. And then ongoing customer experience, programming, technology initiatives, all directed toward making the operation more effective, more efficient, and more customer-oriented. Those were kind of the drivers in developing the proposed budget. Going to DTE, largest taxpayer here in the city, 48% of our tax base. Last year, $8.4 million when you consider property taxes and administrative fees associated with that. The immediate request that we got from them, as you're aware, was a 50% reduction. Kind of got modified a little bit afterwards, 45 over a five-year period, but the reduction is, you know, $4.2 million out of a $20 million general fund budget. That's pretty substantial. As I alluded to, the long-term issue with the plant decommissioning over a period of 20 years, and again, we'll see declining taxable values, and as they could be, as would be expected, their reinvestment in the plant is gonna be going at a pace slower than the depreciation of the plant, and so even with our immediate challenge that we have, we know that in some of the out-years, probably 10 years or so, if I recall from the assessor's discounted cash flow, we start seeing that we're, we see a somewhat precipitous decline in the taxable values. The significance of it is, is in this period of time, we need to have a plan addressing what our infrastructure needs, which I think we all recognize needs to take place. We also have to address services to be operationally and financially sustainable. The greatest impact, particularly since this is affecting the general fund, is police, fire, EMS operations, and I think the other thing, you'll see a slide later on, from the number of employees that we had at one time, is that there's not as many alternatives. I think we'd be down to 175 employees, down from a high of 250 just 10 years ago. So those are all kind of driving some of the challenges that we have immediately, but also long-term. You know, one of the things, again, we'll go through it in detail with that, but also putting aside some funding for a possible legal challenge associated with that if we do have a case that goes before the Michigan Tax Tribunal. And I will say that the assessor has set the assessment role for this year, and, you know, put it at where it was last year with no change, but they do have until the end of May to file an appeal, so we're not gonna know for sure what the direction it may take. The proposed budget has $175,000 in there, anticipating that, and our other taxing entity partners have pledged to participate proportionally as well. They'll be, you know, if I look at the Ottawa County, Port Sheridan CMS case that went, they spent in excess of three-quarters of a million dollars over a few years here, so it's only a raise ourselves for that potential reality. Establish a contingency reserve plan, $2.1 million is contained in the proposed budget. We'll go in a little more detail how we got there, but also, one of the things we still wanna do through it all is maintain some organizational stability in the short run, give us some time to evaluate how this plays out with DTE's immediate taxable value challenge, but we also don't wanna lose our current economic development momentum that we have. And then, as I have discussed in the past, one of the things contained in there is funding for a plan to look at, you know, public safety, and I use that, police-fire, long-term service and staffing plan. I've talked with union representatives in both, and I've acknowledged that, look, long-term, we can't sustain the staffing levels that we have. The idea is to develop a long-term strategy to deal with getting that staffing where we think it would be long-term financially sustainable, so that's contained in the budget to initiate that process. Also in there is the City Council goals, again, just rolling through them real quick. Number one, revitalizing neighborhoods, invest in recreational, cultural, and historic assets. Number two, number three, economic development, four, continuing support for revitalization of downtown, number five, promote community engagement programs, and lastly, provide fiscal responsibility while maintaining quality of life. There's a number of different work plans within those goals and objectives. Focusing on economic development, we are looking to implement elements of the downtown master plan and even their plan, the DDA strategic plan that was adopted earlier this calendar, last calendar year. Telegraph corridor, lazy boy site development, we have funding in there. Ongoing, although we'll talk a little more about River Rays and National Battlefield Park, the Monroe Lake Program, the I-75 corridor, neighborhood improvements, and then certainly looking at partnerships for legacy properties that we had identified during our goal-setting session. Ongoing customer service programs, process mapping, we'll talk a little bit of that with the IT, one of the allocation of some position that we have in there to, again, make our operations more effective, efficient, and most more customer-oriented. Public outreach, survey, we talked a little bit about that, the last work session, you know, website development that has just been completed, but continue to use that, update it on a regular basis, as well as citizen reporting of complaints and issues that may arise. Kind of ties in with some of the technology improvements under water. Departments, our government information systems improvements, GIS, the county has made a pretty strong initiative, certainly working with them in providing that resource broader throughout the community. And then departmental reorganizations, you know, where opportunities exist, retirements, how do you, again, make the department more efficient, effective, and take advantage of those opportunities that may arise. So, in a general overview standpoint, that's kind of a quick and high-picture item, but we'll go in a little more detail as Ed works his way through the next phase. Ed?
Okay, so last year when we did the budget, we projected out two years, so we, every year when you adopt your budget, really just adopting the next, the first year that's coming up, so in this case, what you're looking at is fiscal year 1819, so that's the only one that you're legally adopting, but last year we started also looking at the year after that, and this year we're looking at the second and third year after that. Because of some of the things that we saw coming down the road in terms of potential financial issues, we wanted to be able to look a little longer term, so the budget that you're gonna be presented with, and the reports you'll see, not only projects the budget for next year, but it also projects the budgets for the fiscal year 2020 and 2021, and when I refer to fiscal years, I'm always gonna be referring to the fiscal year ending date, so the fiscal year that ends June 30th, 2019, to me, is fiscal year 19, and that's how, you'll hear me refer to it. But the objective is to develop a responsible budget in light of a potential DTE tax appeal, which Vince covered already, but the millages that are listed here are what are in the ordinance that will be presented to you. All of them stay the same except for the economic development millage, which goes down slightly, so it was .0519 this year. The refuse millage does go up slightly, it was 1.564 this year, it's going up to 1.632. Talk about that a little bit more as we go forward, I've got another couple slides on that. Some of the objectives in any budget is to don't engage in long-term deficit spending. What goes along with that is you don't wanna spend one-time revenue sources on expenditures that are going to carry on throughout the years. One-time revenue should be aligned with one-time expenditures as much as possible. We try to follow the city financial policies. There's a document that the City Council adopted many years ago that's included in the budget document that shows those financial policies. We maintain healthy fund balances, we wanna keep up our infrastructure investment, keep reinvesting in the city, and we wanna maintain and improve city services wherever possible. So as far as some just overall things as far as the budget goes, we're projecting a modest growth in revenue. There's some more details coming up on that as we go here, and there is the DTE set aside that we'll talk a little bit further about as well. The fund balances for the primary city funds, actually all funds, are really in decent shape. There's a few issues we wanna talk about with you as we go a little bit further here in some of the non-general funds, but we'll get to that in a little bit. The pension fund and the retiree healthcare fund are adequately funded, so we're in good shape there. Couple of the, one of the issues we will talk about a little bit further here is there is definitely a need to increase our building inspection fees. We'll talk about that a little further in the presentation, and there is a recommendation that Barry will actually get into when he talks about the water and wastewater funds to increase the utility rates for water and wastewater. Some of the future things, obviously, DTE, I don't need to say that any further. Pension assumption changes will continue this year. Our pension contribution went up about $420,000 roughly, and the big bulk of that was because some of the assumptions that the actuary uses to calculate our annual contribution were changed, and the biggest two of those, and the biggest one this year was related to mortality. You know, people are basically living longer, so the system has to pay pension benefits longer, which causes the system's liability to be higher. The other one was in investment returns. If the system isn't earning enough as much money on its investments, or at least the same percentages that it used to, then that, those funds have to come from somewhere else, either from the employer or from the employees. And so those are the two biggest ones, but that pension, our investment return assumption is actually being phased in over the next, we've already been phased in one year, but it's being phased in over a five-year period, so we'll continue to see that reduction of five basis point, which is .05% reduction in the investment return over the next four years. If you just take that five basis points times the system's assets, that's about $70,000 a year that basically will shift from being funded by investment returns to the city. State revenue sharing is always gonna be uncertain, you never know what the state's gonna do. Lately, they've said they've stopped increasing the state budget-funded portion and basically given us more through the constitutional portion, which then requires them to actually collect increased revenue through sales tax collections for us to get it, so it's, while they are saying we'll get at least a 2% increase, it basically depends on whether they collect it, if we get it. Federal budget reductions, we get about $400,000 a year right now through CDBG funds. That's been on the chopping block for some of the president's budget recommendations, but we'll see where that goes into the future. Infrastructure funding is always something that we need to try to improve upon and increase, there's definitely a need for that. The airport fund is requiring a general fund supplement, we'll get to that a little further, and the stores and equipment fund is the fund that basically operates the city's motor pool or fleet operations, and there's a lot of bigger, older equipment there that is in need of replacement, so that's something that's a future concern, and we'll talk about that fund as we go forward here. And then continued property acquisition costs for the battlefield properties and others, so there's some local costs that go along with those that we have to keep our eyes on and make sure we have covered. Okay, so now we'll get to some of the specific details in the budget, and personnel is, slides coming later, I keep saying that, but there's some slides coming later that kinda show what percentage of the total personnel costs are, but by far, personnel costs are the largest portion of any government budget. In terms of health insurance, it says all groups are PA 152 hard cap compliant. 2012, the state passed a law that basically required cities and other municipalities to make a decision on how they were gonna comply with the act, and the city decided that it was gonna be comply with the hard cap, which means for each level of insurance coverage, whether it be single, two-person, family, the state says you have to stay under these caps in total, based on your total population of employees, and that's how much you're allowed to spend per year on these, on these caps, or on these coverages. We are compliant with that, we have been ever since, and we're actually a little bit under it, not substantially, but we're in good shape there. We did budget a 5% increase over current premium levels. Those hard caps only go up by the cost of medical inflation each year, so they don't, usually don't go up much more than 3% to 4%. Post-retirement healthcare, says 2018-19 ADC was calculated by the actuary at 1.337 million. In the past, talked about ARC, which is actuarial required contribution, the language changed a little bit with some of the new accounting standards, when that's now actuarially determined contribution. So we're at 1.337 million is what the actuary said we should be contributing next year. What's budgeted is 1.118 million. That's one of the areas that we'll talk about a little further on in this presentation that was reduced a little bit to help set aside some funds. The OPEB bond payment that we make, we did issue bonds a couple years ago to fund a large portion of the liability for the retiree healthcare system. The general fund portion of that bond payment, or excuse me, that's the entire bond payment for next fiscal year is $2.32 million. So if you were to add that $2.32 million with the 1.118 million, that's our total cost for next fiscal year for OPEB compared to what used to, our contribution used to be about $3.9 million, so that's, that was the primary reason for issuing OPEB bonds, was to help reduce that, number one, reduce the liability, but also reduce the cost. The actuarial valuation that was last completed was as of December 31st, 2016, and it did say that, right now, it's estimating our annual claims are about $4.7 million, so that's how much the fund has to pay out each year to cover retirees' benefits, but the fund is 84.7% funded, and the total actuarial accrued liability was 67.48 million. As of December 31st, 2017, there were $62.7 million in assets in that fund. As far as the pension system goes, the total contribution budgeted, excuse me, for next fiscal year is 1.8, that 1.8 million dollar number there, the general fund portion of that is 1.51 million. Have budgeted in, and ask that reallocation that we're working with both the pension board, the actuary, and the unions on, that's about a $450,000 difference. If that didn't happen for some reason, that would be $450,000 more that the general fund would have to contribute into the pension fund next year. The plan as a whole for the pension system is 91.8% funded, and as I explained kind of already, is that the assumption changes will be continuing into the future as far as the investment rate of return. I would say, just going back to that, that the plan as a whole is 91.8% funded, but it also, that takes into account some of the assets that are in groups that are overfunded, so if you were to take out those assets for those groups that weren't, that are overfunded, that can't really be applied to some of the other groups, it's really only about 85% funded, so it's one of the quirks to how the system is valued at this point. The multi-sports complex, these are some of the changes in positions that are in this budget, so last year when we adopted the budget, we were still planning to operate the multi-sports complex. The decision to close it didn't happen until after the budget was adopted, so we had a couple of full-time and some part-time positions budgeted there. Those, since we're not obviously running it, have been removed from the budget. Public safety, there's a focus on improving cooperation and coordination within both police and fire, and in total, the staffing has been reduced by three positions there. We're gonna, there is an additional, a new position in the budget. The official title hasn't been assigned to it yet, but I'll show it to you here in a second, but it's something like Business Intelligence Coordinator, something like that, along those lines. But we did an IT strategic plan with Plant Moran last year, and one of the things that it recommended were from a project management and just an overall technology utilization standpoint, we needed somebody to push those things forward and to work with departments to make them happen essentially, and especially from a GIS standpoint and a, kind of a document imaging workflow-type process, it recommended putting somebody in place that could work on those things. So that's, that's one new position in the budget. There is one position at DPS that has been vacant since last spring, summer sometime, that has been eliminated through attrition, and there's some other changes that we'll talk about in a minute here that have, that have been budgeted for, no reductions or additions, just a sort of a restructuring. So this slide kinda shows where we've been in terms of total regular and part-time, regular part-time and full-time positions, so what's budgeted here as far as that is 175.98, kind of a strange number, but that's a full-time equivalent number. That's down five positions from last year, and you can see back in fiscal year '05, we were at 250, even, if you went even back further than that, we were getting close to 260, so it's been a big reduction in the city's personnel numbers over time. That table that's listed there shows the individual changes that make up that five, so you've got, that position at the top is the one I just talked about. The GIS Asset Management Specialist kinda replaces the CAD GIS Section Leader, which had been in the Engineering Department. The intention here is to make it more of a, an IT position that will focus solely on GIS. Currently, we're managing those duties through a contract, and so that when this position goes in place, that will eliminate that contract, and that person would be supervised by the Business Intelligence Management Coordinator, if that's what it ends up being called. There is, the other positions there, there's a fire, two firefighters removed, one patrol officer, and I think the rest we've already talked about. I think it's important to note there's no layoffs here, no terminations, it's just through attrition and vacant positions that these things are happening. As far as wage increases for personnel, we're basically following what's been in the collective bargaining agreements, and we are in negotiations right now with some of the unions, so those are up in the air a little bit, but we do have some, some amounts budgeted to cover things, and we just have to go through the process of negotiating those agreements to see where we end up with them. See, this list here are, just for your information, there's some, in addition to the regular and full-time, regular part-time and full-time employees, we also hire seasonal and temporary employees throughout the city, and this list here is an example, or is all of them that I came up with that we have budgeted at this point, so if you have any questions about any of those, be happy to talk about them. The capital improvements program that you adopted back in February is included in this budget as a whole. It's in various places throughout the budget and various funds, but in total, it is budgeted. There's $4.2 million in the street projects included, $2.7 million in utility projects, either water or wastewater. We do have quite a bit of equipment and vehicle replacement for DPS budgeted, but some of that probably, in that, in that number, probably $400,000, actually not quite that much, maybe about $300,000 of that may, may need to be financed. We'll talk about that a little bit further on. The central fire station is still ongoing, we expect it to be a $6 million project. The council chambers project is, is actually, bids are due on April 9th. Fire truck purchase and financing has actually been approved, we just have to, have to this summer approve the financing, and the trucks will be delivered later this year. Labor Park Master Plan implementation will happen, and there's other smaller projects that were approved as well. You want me to take this one, Vince, or do you wanna take off from here? Okay, I appreciate it.
You know, contained in the budget is a...
You know, contained in the budget is a, as I mentioned earlier, some of these items are a continuation of items that we have had in the past, but also incorporating some of the discussions that we had as part of our goals and objectives. So we did put funding in place for a volunteer recognition program, I think I put aside five thousand for that. Our ongoing agreement with the Monroe Business Development Corporation, we have that in there. Part of it is the council, starting last year, spent, decided that, I think rightfully so, is tracking legislation a lot closer. We have a gun wear subscription that's in there that wasn't in the budget last year. We separated the economic development positions, both Mr. Cochran and Ms. Knowles, was in the manager's budget, and thought just to give it its focus, we moved that out, so it's separate. We talked about the citizen academy engagement, we put, I think, two or three grand, three? And for that potentially, I think I would intend to try and engage our citizenry in their ongoing boards and conditions, but also other volunteer aspects as well. Continued phasing of our branding implementation, and then with the clerk treasurer staffing reorganization, they were anticipating in the next year probably a couple of retirements, and again, we've done some evaluation of, of the structure of the department, looking at potential cross-training opportunities, but how do you get enough redundancy in the system so that, the way it's current format is, is that you essentially have two people in the treasury and two in clerk, and there's, we need to integrate and do a lot more cross-training in between. So we've got the funding in there, but there's more to come regarding the detail of how that would be implemented as the retirements proceed. I'll keep going if that's all right.
Sure. You got to roll.
Now we have some ongoing legal and consultant fees related to DTEs, Ed's got a good slide later laying some of that out with those legal expenses. As he mentioned, the, kind of the transformation, if you will, with the IT services, moving the GIS staff out of engineering and, and starting to, to structure a broader citywide type of use of implementing GIS, but also process improvements. And then certainly a number of items in the police budget dealing with crime mapping, records management software, radio upgrade, we're going to talk about that, I think, in our April sixteenth meeting, the county had adopted a resolution to put on the, I believe, August ballot to, to have a surcharge for the nine-one-one system, of which radio improvement can be a substantial component of that, affecting both police and fire, in-car computer replacements. And then, as I alluded to, we put funding in there, picked the number at seventy-five thousand, but consultant to help with developing the short-term, long-term view of how we can find our way to where we need to be twenty years from now with, with police, fire, and EMS operations. A component of it is, is also working at how we can, you know, marry the, the operations in the short run, at least to, to improve cooperation between the two. I think, as I've told the unions, I don't have a predetermined form that I think is the right answer, and I do believe you have to have a core group of firefighters in there, what's that right number, whether it's going to be supplemented with public safety officers, with paid-on call, combination of that, and I'm not even, you know, I would certainly entertain, you know, even inter-jurisdictional, inter-governmental jurisdictional program as well, but we do have to start looking at this and start the process of how we're going to get to what we think will be affordable if we proceed down the road. I'll let you take over for a couple.
Okay.
Go ahead, get the first question.
All right, so, and, and starting, I don't know, in the last couple of years, we've been on a process to gradually replace the turnout gear, the, both the firefighters and the public safety officers wear, and we're continuing on with that, we budget about twenty thousand dollars a year for that. Included in the fire department, in the, both the police department and the fire department, we budget some funds for equipment replacing with, within those departments that don't necessarily fall under the definition of something that you would include in the CIP program, so there's smaller items, less than ten thousand dollars normally. One of them, for example, with the fire department is their JAWS, JAWS of Life replacement, and there's some other smaller equipment items there too. Believe we budget about thirty thousand each for both police and fire for operating equipment type replacement each fiscal year. There's funds budgeted for a lazy boy sub-area plan, that is actually included in the fiscal year seventeen, eighteen budget that you would be amending, so our hope is that we can, if we're going to do that, we can get that approved by the city council by the end of this fiscal year. And then downtown master plan was actually, the, the contract for that was actually approved previously, but part of the funding was meant to come out of next fiscal year, so that's included in, basically to finish that off. We do have some local costs related to the MNRTF, means Michigan National Resources Trust Fund, that's the grant that we're using to purchase properties near the battlefield site, battlefield park site, but there are some local costs that come, come along with that in terms of consulting and demolitions. We've got the demolitions, we think, fully funded this fiscal year, but there's some additional consulting when we do make these purchases that comes, is averaging about eighty-five hundred dollars a, a property. We think that's going to be from here on out about another hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's included in this budget as well. The building department, there's still ongoing improvements there. The demolition budget, you know, our budget for demolishing blighted properties is, was reduced from a hundred and fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand. I will say we've got, between the Natural Resources Trust Fund properties and, and some grant funds we got, and, and just our, our own demolition funds, we've got over six hundred thousand dollars budgeted in this current fiscal year. We've only spent less than ten thousand so far, so there's a, a good chance that some of those will carry over into the next fiscal year. The new refuse contract is funded within this budget. We do have the financing for the replacement of the ladder truck included, because we won't actually be doing the financing until July or later, that first payment won't actually fall into next fiscal year, it'll fall into the nineteen-twenty fiscal year, but that is included in the, the budget that's here. We're going to continue on with customer service improvements and programming and funding some of those. The parks master plan funding, that also is, was actually, we were, the original plan was to fund part of it out of this fiscal year and part of it out of the upcoming fiscal year. Because of the status of this fiscal year's budget, we were able to move that full funding up into this fiscal year, and again, the hope there is to get a contract awarded by the end of June of this fiscal year, so to take advantage of that funding. The parks maintenance, there's various larger maintenance projects budgeted there, and ranging from five to ten thousand dollars that are budgeted in, in their, their budget. In the multi-sports complex in total for the ongoing operations such as utilities and, and building maintenance, we still pay for some phone lines out there, things like that. Ninety thousand in total is budgeted at this point. That's down, you know, where last year we were budgeting a, a total subsidy of over three hundred thousand dollars, so that's one of the items that is on the list on a later slide. It's funny how things get presented earlier than they were supposed to, but that's one of the items that we use to save some funds to balance this budget. All right, so.
You know what, I'll take at least the first one here with the ALCC reduction contained in the proposed budget is a, a reduction in their appropriation from a hundred and forty thousand to seventy thousand. I did meet with the members of the executive board last Tuesday and discussed with them, in part that, you know, I came in pretty hard to get everybody's attention that there is truly a need to start looking at other partnerships, other grant programs, alternatives to help provide additional programming here, but also with the, the grant program in, not to generate money, but to serve the community is, in a lot of cases, the grant funding can be used over personnel costs, overhead costs such as building, utilities, maintenance, those type of things, and so, you know, I think I'd, you know, I suggest keeping it at seventy thousand, but clearly, and I think they'll, they're, they're going to be here at the April second work session, but to, to initiate a process where how do you start to get additional programming there? Again, I laid it on, you know, the fact that twenty years from now, where are you going to be, you're going to have a lot of communities that are able to, to fund a lot of those operations and with various grants and, and funding programs to provide service to the community, so we can have a little further dialogue with that as well, so.
All right, water and wastewater rates, Barry will get into those a little bit further in the presentation, but, you know, there's increases in those rates, and he's got some information in his slides about why, why there are increases, and so we'll leave it at that for now. DPS's vector is in need of attention, we were looking at, we looked at funding, or budgeting some money in the refuse fund to rehabilitate the current one, and as of today, it looks like that might not be a, a good option, so that's something that we, we'll need to deal with yet. Battlefield property is nothing more than I really talked about so far, we've still got a lot of grant funds there, that kind of, how much we can do depends on how much match we have for the grant. Inspection fees, there's a definitely a need to increase the building inspection fees of the city, we had a present, or a review done by Plant Moran, and, and what they found in their review is that we were only recapturing sixty percent or less of our costs through building inspection fees of the building inspection costs, so there's definitely a need to increase the fees, and we are, I've been putting together some data in terms of trying to basically find out what our, our baseline is, what is our normal activity, how much, how many, on, on any given year, how many permits do we think we're going to do, and, and how much do we think those permits are going to be valued? We're actually meeting tomorrow to talk about that and where to go with this. So I would, we don't, we won't put that fee increase in this budget ordinance because the fee schedule is so enormous, it would be difficult to include in a budget ordinance, but, so it'll be done by a separate action. But in that study, Plant Moran also found that we weren't fully funding our rental inspection program through the fees that are charged for that program, so there is in that budget ordinance on the, in the last, in the exhibit that's attached to it, there's some fee increase recommendations. Some of the fees actually stay the same, they're just listed on the schedule, but the, the fee for the rental inspections is actually recommended to increase from seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars, and it's an every-three-year thing, so every three years in total, per unit, you'd be paying a hundred dollars. The airport crack ceiling and marking project is, which you've already actually approved, is included in the airport budget. Some of the, these other things are, are related to IT actions, and the first two you've actually already approved. City sourced is, we have a meeting, I believe it's this week, to kick that off, and it took a little while to get the contract negotiated with them, a week or two, so that ten-to-twelve week period actually starts this week, so hopefully by the end of June, we'll have that up and running at the latest. BSNA's work orders and inventory management implementation kind of go along with that because items that come in through city source from the public, if primarily DPS is going to be using this software, it will flow directly into that work order program for them, and they can deal with it there. Again, tho, those kickoff meetings, I believe, start next week, so both of them will be going on. We do, we haven't purchased a new server, a network server for the city in quite a while, and so there's a need to do that, and we do have that budgeted within the IT or the information systems fund. Not only a server, but our servers are virtualized, which I hope I don't have to explain that too, too much, but basically they, it allows one server to serve as multiple servers, and the software that goes with it needs to be upgraded as well. So that's, that actually is a thirty to forty thousand dollar project alone that is included in the IT fund budget. The first floor copier is pretty old, I'm guessing it's almost ten years old now, so that, that copier is budgeted for replacement next year. And there's some other things in the IT strategic plan in terms of looking at our contract with the county and implementing some other operating procedures that will help out the IT function that, that we'll be looking at implementing next year. So all that talk about what we're doing, now we get to look at the numbers a little bit. So the general fund is the main fund of the city, of course, and that's where we fund anything that isn't required to be funded in another fund. So this is where you'll find police and fire and, and a lot of your main governmental services like engineering, planning, some of the zoning and blight enforcement, recreation, all those departments, along with your internal services departments like finance, city manager, HR, are all budgeted out of the general fund. And so what you've got here on this list is a kind of a summarized category of the revenue sources for the general fund for the next, the current year plus three additional years is what the projection is based on. And what you can see there is if you look at the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen projected activity, that's what you'd be asking, or you would be asked, you are being asked to amend the current year budget to, and then two thousand and eighteen, nineteen is what you're asking to adopt as the revenues for next fiscal year, and then there's projections for two additional years. So what looks kind of strange in the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen columns is there are about twenty-five and a half million dollars where in the three future years, they go down to a little over twenty million dollars, ending up at around twenty-one million dollars. The main reason for that is we've got a four point nine million dollar Natural Resources Trust Fund grant budgeted in the current fiscal year. As, as that gets completed, it will fall off, but whatever needs to be carried over into the next fiscal years will automatically happen, so that's why it's not, none of it is included in the future fiscal years at this point. So those are the revenue programs by ca, or revenue numbers by category that are listed This next slide kind of tries to show you what percentage some of those revenues make up of the total in the general fund. So if you were to look, and now let's focus on the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen requested budget column, you can see down at the bottom, the total revenue is twenty point one-nine-four million dollars, and then some of the categories that are included in that total are listed above. So for example, property taxes are seventy-three point one-two percent of that total. Personal property tax reimbursement, which we started receiving when the state implemented its personal property tax elimination law, are about three point, not three point one-nine percent. So really, those are kind of, and then I should go on a little further, property tax administration fee is also related to property taxes. So those top three categories together amount to almost eighty percent of the general fund revenue. The next biggest amount is, is state revenue sharing, which is about ten percent, and you see some of the other amounts, franchise fees. We do charge for the internal service type activities such as, again, finance, clerk treasurer, city manager, city attorney, we charge those services back, they are all fully funded out of the general fund, but a portion of those services are charged back to our other funds such as water, wastewater, the building safety fund, because they also use those services, and it's kind of done on an indirect basis. So those amounts that you see there are those charges. So in total, nineteen point three million of the total are related, are of, the general fund's funding are related to those sources, which amounts to a little over ninety-five percent.
I always, if I may just interject for a moment here, is, I like this graph, I've always told folks that you can take ten revenues and you're going to get anywhere from ninety to ninety-five percent of your general fund found there. So when we talk about the DTE potential impact, you can see that eighty percent of your revenue stream to the general fund, that's pretty significant. It is, that is one of our always ongoing concerns, state revenue sharing, if the state tinkered with that, and I think I may actually mention this when we were doing capital improvements back in December. Talking about that, that, you know, if the state's looking at, you know, potential shortfall in revenue a few years down the road, historically, they've always went to cut revenue sharing, and so those are significant items, and as Ed said, right there's ninety percent of your general fund, you know, that, those two categories of revenues, so. I, I like it because it's very explicit and simple list of, okay, this is what funds your general fund operations.
Couple other notes on that slide, if you were to look at the, compare the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen projected activity to the eighteen, nineteen requested budget for the personal property tax reimbursements, you can see that this year it's a little over one point two million dollars, where next year it's six hundred and forty-five thousand. When that law was put in place, it was written in such a way that whatever funds were required to be set When that law was put in place, it was written in such a way that whatever funds were required to be set aside to fund personal property tax reimbursements, they all went over to this organization that was responsible for distributing, distributing the funds. And if the funds that were, um, set aside were more than to give municipalities, counties, school districts their full reimbursement, they were then required to distribute those excess funds as well. So for the last two fiscal years, we've received like, I think it's around 300% of what we were supposed to receive on, on, on those, uh, if we were to just get 100% funding. So that's why you see the 1.2 million dollars there compared to next year of only 645,000. The 645 is roughly what my best estimate calculation of what we'll get if we do get just 100% of full funding. Um, it's very possible we'll get extra funding again, but we can't count on that because the legislature could always change the law before we get there. So you just can't count on it until you get there.
The governor, uh, and the legislature revisiting, you know, revenue sharing to, to go to a broader distribution. So that's a part of the process is, is that, so. But we don't know how long it's going to last, we're skeptical.
We'll keep taking it though, as long as I want to keep giving it. Um, the franchise fees, uh, this is probably the first year since I've been here at the city where I've actually fun, or recommended budgeting a slight decrease. Uh, we are starting to see those amounts go down, probably because people are dropping cable and going to other sources of, of entertainment. So, um, we'll keep an eye on that, but it does look like they're starting to decline. Uh, so the total taxable value increase for the city is, is 2.01%. And, uh, that's, uh, in total, I do have a, I don't, didn't put it in a slide, but I do have some information on how that works out in terms of the different categories such as residential, industrial, commercial, so on and so forth. Uh, um, so I can get you that information if you're interested. But included in that total is a two, the, the CPI for determining taxable value did go up or was set at 2.1% this year. So what that means is the assessor calculates an assessed value of your property, which is supposed to approximate 50% of true cash value. Um, but then taxable value is a term, uh, created in legislation that can go up either by CPI or 5%, whichever is lower. So this year, because CPI is lower and because the taxable value is less than the assessed value, um, the, the taxable value of the plant has gone up by 2.1%. So, um, that's how that, that process works. Uh, revenue sharing, uh, is currently budgeted at the project, the bud- the governor's budget projection. Um, 2% in subject, subsequent years increases. So, um, as we said, that's always questionable as to where that will be, but, uh, things have been good lately, but we'll see. Uh, PPT reimbursement, we already kind of talked about that, franchise fee. Um, and then the natural resources trust fund grant is budgeted this year. If for some reason, uh, we don't use, well, I'm sure we won't use it all this year, whatever we don't use this year will get carried over to next year. Uh, this is a breakdown of the millage rates that we levy. Um, probably could have taken a couple of those lines off of there, now that I look at it. But, uh, general, you know, the, the first column there is what we levy this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2018. And, and, uh, the second column is what we're recommending for next fiscal year. And then the final column is the change. So there's no change in the general operating fire station or the bridge. There's a small decrease in the economic development millage. The reason there's a decrease there is that by statute, we can only generate $50,000 in tax revenue from that millage. So it has to be adjusted so that we don't go over that amount. And then the refuse millage is going up by .068 mils, that's primarily for two reasons. Um, I'd have a slide coming later here on the refuse fund though, so let's save that for that. And, um, but that's what it looks like right now and that's what's in the budget ordinance that, it's a draft budget ordinance that you've been given. Okay, now we'll get into the expenditures and, you know, this is the same type of slide as revenue. It, it, it's really summarized, it breaks it down by major, uh, function of the city. So general government is your, uh, internal departments, it's the mayor council budget, city manager, uh, HR, finance, types of departments, engineering, city hall maintenance, those, those types of things. Public safety is primarily police and fire, but it's also zoning ordinance, uh, and code enforcement. That's the way the state chart of account says it should be reported, so that's where it's reported. Uh, public works is primarily DPS and their activities. Uh, community development is the planning, uh, it's the CPC. It's also the new economic development department that we talked about. Um, culture and recreation is your recreation administration. It's your, uh, recreation programs and parks maintenance and the little bit that we talked about for the multi-sports complex. And then you've got debt service, uh, which are, are primarily the, uh, the bond payments on the retiree healthcare bonds or OPEB bonds. Uh, but it also includes the, the funding for the fires, fire truck financing next year. And this slide and the next slide are a little bit different for that number. This slide also includes, we pay some special assessments on the county drains in the county and, and that number is included in this number as well. Other financing units uses are primarily transfers to other city funds. When we fund capital projects that are governmental type projects that require general fund funding, we don't pay for them and account for them out of the general fund. We transfer them to a separate, transfer the funds to a separate capital project fund and the funds are accounted for there. So that's the bulk of it, uh, as well as same with if we fund street projects out of the general fund, those funds are transferred to either the major or local street funds and, and accounted for there. And then there's also a small amount for funding the cemetery's operations. Um, this is a similar type of slide and the totals that are on each column are going to be the same. But again, here it breaks it down between some different categories. These would be more like your operating classifications, so you've got personnel, uh, supplies, other operating, some small capital outlay, which is basically police and fire there. Those are capital outlay items that aren't, uh, funded, um, through the CIP process. And then debt service and operating transfers. Operating transfers are what I just talked about, where the, the funds get transferred to other funds to be accounted for elsewhere for capital projects primarily. Uh, the debt service on this slide is actually a little bit different than the last slide because on this slide, uh, those special assessments that I talked about, um, aren't reported in this number. And, uh, there's a, a small amount that is actually transferred to another fund, the debt service fund to account for the debt service. It's not included in that amount as well, but in total, everything's there. Uh, this slide is limited to the revenue slide we just talked about. It kind of just tries to show you, uh, you know, what your major revenue or excuse me, expenditure, um, sources are. So if you look down, we can focus on the 2018, 19 requested budget column. You can see the total expenditures at the bottom are 20,285,000 roughly. And to the right there, it sums up some of those items that were on the previous slide. It breaks out some of the items that are in the categories in the previous slides and shows you what percentage they are of the total. So if you were to start at the top, you can see that personnel is 54.18% of the budget. Um, that used to be a higher number, uh, when we refund, when we issued the bonds for the, uh, retiree healthcare system. Instead, where we used to contribute over two and a half to $3 million out of the general fund to the retiree healthcare system, that's gone down now significantly to less than, uh, five, six to, five to $600,000. And, but they've been, those costs have been reclassified to debt service. So where personnel used to be a higher percentage, it's really somewhat a reclassification into debt service below. Uh, but in that other operating, if you were to go back to that other slide, the previous slide, you'd see the other operating, for example, for 2018, 19 was 6.367 million dollars. So if you go forward, what I've got listed here is 5.485 million of that total. And it just shows you what the major categories are that are included there. Um, a lot of them really can't be changed much. Uh, legal services, which will show that total a little, little bit and does include the DTE fund, uh, legal funding is included there. Rentals are, um, there's some building rental there. We pay, one of the quirks in our accounting is that the multi-sports complex is actually rented from the building authority. So the, the bond payment that's in the general fund actually shows up as rent and we pay rent to the building authority and the building authority pays the debt. So about 430,000 of that, 1.1 million dollars is related to that. But the rest are some other building rentals such as the, we rent the police department space from the county. Uh, we, equipment gets charged back to the general fund as it's used for a lot of our cars and heavy equipment used by, by TPS. And then there's some chargeback of equipment that departments use from the IT fund that's also included in that amount. So most of that, uh, nothing, unless those, uh, costs aren't recaptured, nothing can really be done with that. Um, the general fund pays its portion of the IT fund operating costs, that's the 334,000. We've got insurance, which is the property and liability insurance, utilities, which is phone, electric, gas and water and wastewater, grass mowing of city properties, street lighting, the amount contributed to the port of Monroe for its operations, uh, demolitions, the special assessments that I mentioned for county drains. Uh, city grants is three items really, it's the amount we contribute to the ALCC for their operations. Uh, we, we pay half of our franchise fee to impact for their operations. And then we pay about $57,000 a year to the county library system for the maintenance of the buildings. That's what makes up that amount. And then the contingency is where we've set aside the funds that, uh, are needed to, uh, deal with potential, uh, paybacks related to the DTE issue. So that's what's in that amount, um, in addition to about a hundred thousand dollars of just contingency, contingency that could be used on other items. And then at the bottom, you've got some smaller items, but capital outlay, debt service, and then operating transfers that we talked about before. So in total, those things make up about 94% of the entire general fund expenditure budget. And this kind of sums it all up. Um, so our, our financial policies that the city council has adopted say that we will keep at least a 15% fund balance in the general fund. And that's our goal, to stay above that amount, um, to be considered financially healthy. And what you've got here is, um, a slide that brings together those previous revenue and expenditure totals and shows you what the fund balance is for, projected to be for each of these years. So if you focus on the 2018, 19 requested budget column, what it's telling you there is that we're, we're projecting that we will receive revenue of 20.194 million dollars. And we're budgeting expenditures of 20,285,000, 20,285,000. Um, so that means we're spending $91,000 more than we're expected to receive. So where does that $91,000 come from? It comes out of fund balance. Fund balance is kind of the city's overall savings account. Um, basically from the beginning of the time, as revenues have exceeded expenditures, the difference goes into fund balance and stays there. And it gets adjusted each year by the difference between revenue and expenditures. So it's from the beginning of time, we've, we've, uh, accumulated a little over $4 million in fund balance in the general fund. Um, and that is, that 91,000 would be spent out of that amount. So that would mean that at the end of the 2019 fiscal year, we would just have, still have roughly $4 million in fund balance. As a percentage of expenditures, that's 19.71%, which is a very healthy number. In addition to the general fund, fund balance, the city has a budget stabilization fund, which can be called upon during, uh, very specific times. Uh, the, the fund is set up by state statute and there's only certain instances where that, those funds can be drawn upon. Um, it's meant for emergencies, it's meant for times when a community has, having hard financial times. But if you take that into account, the city has 29.57% of expenditures in both fund balance and the budget stabilization fund balance as of the end of the 2019 fiscal year. Uh, when we do our financial statements, those two funds, the budget stabilization fund and the general fund are combined together as one and, and you'll see them all as one. And that's how the rest of the slide works there. What it would be saying is, on this projection, based on, uh, those numbers, at the end of the 2021 fiscal year, we'd have 18.22% of general fund fund balance and 27.73% in total when you combine general fund and budget stabilization fund. Some of the other things that are in the general fund, this is the, it's this called the city attorney budget, but it, it counts for some other things these days as well. Um, 321,000 roughly is budgeted for next fiscal year. Uh, prior year, we started out 143,000, uh, we budgeted about 78,000, uh, for Mr. Bud's services. We budget 45,000 for the contract with the, the county for prosecution services. And in this coming year's budget, uh, we're budgeting 195,000 for outside counsel with 20,000 of that amount being related to a potential need for attorneys and consultants related to the DTE issue. Uh, in addition, not included in this budget, uh, but included in the HR budget is, uh, a budget for the city's labor attorney services. And that's budgeted at $40,000 for next fiscal year. Some other highlights, uh, economic development department was broken out from the city managers. In total, that budget for next year is about $206,000. Um, it's personnel costs for the two positions plus some other, uh, operating costs, not, not overly significant operating costs, but some operating costs there. Uh, the port of Monroe again is at 400,000, contingency, we talked about a little bit. Uh, there's in 1920, the debt addition for the ladder truck is 92,468. That's an estimated amount now based on a, a 10-year loan payment. Um, I think it was at 4% interest, if I remember right. Um, in this budget, we did, we do have a $430,000 debt payment that we make related to the multi-sports complex and that, uh, bond payment or that debt is, is scheduled to be paid off in November of 2023. Um, but we, if you remember the, the personal property tax, um, overpayments we received the last couple of years, plus some other funding that we've been able to set aside, we've been used, we've used that in this budget to basically pay the multi-sports complex debt, so it's not really a burden on the general fund this fiscal year. And it shouldn't be for at least the next three to four fiscal years, if that, uh, assuming that funding holds out as projected. And then included in the, is 825,000, $833 in capital budgeted for fiscal year 18, 19.
Going forward, uh, it kind of explains how we got to the 2.1 million dollar, uh, contingencies or associated with it. Ed just mentioned, uh, the 430,000 dollar annual payment that we make to the building authority for the multi-sports complex debt. Uh, we've set that money aside that, that carries us for, for the next few years and potentially we may look in the value of whether just to pay it off in its entirety. Uh, the subsidy, while we have 90,000 budgeted, uh, we were, uh, as Ed alluded to, paying well over 95,000, but, um, over 300,000.
Over 300,000, yeah.
So, you know, we pulled a couple hundred thousand out of that. Uh, the reduced retiree healthcare contribution, I talked a little bit about the difference between the, uh, the ARC and what we proposed with, uh, the budget. Uh, some of this is the general fund component, but also there's affected departments such as the water and the wastewater and building. Um, but that came up with that almost $200,000 difference, uh, from the ARC and what we're actually going to fund. Uh, reduced capital improvements, uh, this was just a simple 25% reduction of DTE's valuation. We historically have provided, uh, a million dollars, uh, from the general fund to capital improvements for roads, parks, sidewalks, projects of that nature. Uh, the reduced ALCC appropriation of $70,000, uh, which we can talk a little bit further, certainly at the next meeting. Personnel reductions, forestry one, firefighters, uh, two positions that we're not looking at backfilling. We have two PSOs, we've had this ongoing, uh, discussion with, with 41, uh, there's 39 positions funded. I think at one time we had 41 in there. Uh, and then we had a part-time receptionist position, uh, when you take the sum of all of those, you get 350,000. And then, uh, we talked a little bit about reducing our general fund, building demolitions from 150,000 dollars per year to 75. Uh, on the next slide, um, when this came out, uh, we changed the scope of the, um, uh, project for the, uh, for the, um, fire station, uh, and making school site, uh, at one time it was a 6.8 billion dollar project. Now we've got it down to 2.0, or 6.0 million, the six even is what we're budgeting. But we set that money as a reserve, uh, we're still levying the full millage amount in the event if there is a, uh, a judgment rendered against us. At least we have, uh, the means to potentially pay that back. Uh, the battlefield foundation, we had been working with them the last couple of years, providing 40,000 dollars a year. Um, that will be coming to an end, we have $15,000 remaining obligation into the following fiscal year 18, 19. eighteen nineteen, uh, and then that obligation is completed. Uh, I highlighted the, the, the next two items, or bolded them, uh, the refuse millage reserve. Uh, we do levy a separate millage, uh, for refuse. Rather than, um, increase, uh, millage for that, uh, um, you know, both Ed and I are comfortable with recognizing that, in the event, if there is a, uh, a, um, judgment against the city somewhere down the road, that, uh, the general fund would, uh, incur the cost of the refuse millage, and then at a later time, uh, increase the refuse millage to repay the general fund for that. We really didn't see any point of raising, uh, the millage, probably what, over two tenths of a mil to, just to, to set aside a reserve for, for that, so.
Probably at least that, yeah.
Yeah. So, and then the other is, uh, looking, uh, we incorporated a, a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar pension contribution reduction, certainly an ongoing discussion, uh, involving all of the collective bargaining units and the pension board. Uh, it's an accounting-related item, but it does make a significant impact, all of which would hit the general fund, so, so we have that. You take the sum of those, uh, from A to K, and you get, uh, a little over two point one million dollars, uh, which is how we've, uh, established the contingency reserve in the event of, uh, we have a, uh, somewhere, assuming that they, uh, appeal the, the taxable value and the, of course, through tax regulations and so forth and so on, so, that's how we got there, is, is to do that.
Pretty much ends our discussion about the general fund. Want to stop for any questions about the general fund before we go on?
Well, I was thinking about that, because I'm, I'm sure that's just enough information we all can handle at one time. There's a lot there, and it's understood, and so, for some, it's, uh, while they have, may have exposure or some experience in, in budgets like this, maybe first time for a council review for some members, and even those that have been here, uh, it's still a lot to absorb once a year, as you do the presentation. So, those are, um, general fund budget related, and of course, we'll get into non-general. My thought is, uh, make, if there's any particular question, without getting too far, because we need to go through the remainder as well, where the non-general fund, uh, budget items are at. And that, I guess, council can ask those. I have a couple notes and maybe things that we'll follow up at the end. Then I may have, uh, some further reviews, whether it be at a work session before the next council meeting, uh, because the council meeting will be the first reading, some, uh, an opportunity to obviously get with, uh, city manager or the, as well, prior to that. But I don't know if there's some questions from council currently on anything specific, like maybe, uh, a, uh, clarification on the non, or on the general fund items. I have a couple, because I think Bill said it, but I'll ask council members if they have anything first, right off. If not, we'll probably continue.
Yeah, I do have a question. I, I, I see in the personnel level here, in this slide, uh, page eight, uh, it says you were reducing the staffing by three positions, but I also notice later on that you had reduced by four positions, two firefighters and two PSOs. Just curious as to...
That's page eighteen and page nineteen. I have the same note. So, I know it, it lists them individually of where they're, some were meaning shifted from, where some reductions are anticipated, but then the most recent page on eighteen, well, eighteen, page eighteen of what we are, our handout, it does list two, and two.
Well, I think that the way I would explain it is that, last year, when we adopted the budget, you know, we always have this official list of positions for each department, and last year's budget would have included, um, forty on the police side, nineteen on the fire side, for a total of fifty-nine. And, um, what we're budgeting for this fiscal year is fifty-six, so there's a, a reduction in total of three, but there are also, over the last fiscal year, we have gone and allowed the police to go over that budgeted total, so that, because they've had a lot of problems keeping their staffing level full for many years now, so we've actually, because of the vacant positions and, and upcoming retirements, we have allowed them to go over the forty to forty-one. So, um, while that, that was a temporary increase, that's really the difference there. We were, they were, you know, for a short time, while they were getting their staffing, um, stabilized, uh, up to forty-one, and, and this will get them down to thirty-nine. Um, we still maybe, I mean, depending on how things go, if, uh, you know, it looks like there's still problems like that, we still may, may be able to do a temporary, um, uh, increase, but, you know, in, in terms of what the budget is created on and, and the positions that are funded, it's, it's based on thirty-nine at this point.
How many of that forty are PSOs?
Uh, well, you, the chief is included in that number, and I believe you only have one other, um, officer that is not a PSO. So, all of them are intended to be PSOs, except for those two.
Kind of gets to my question along the same lines. I, I think the answer to the first one was, you know, the forty and the nineteen, that includes the chief's positions in both departments, correct?
Yes.
And then, of course, that, then that tells me the allocated number that's, uh, currently there. And then I, I was always, uh, curious on the current staffing level, current positions filled, what those numbers are. And then it gets to the number that the councilwoman just asked on the police side, because we're talking about this utilization of personnel the best we can. How many of the current allocated numbers are PSOs? And, and, and how are you going to get there to the, I guess, the thirty-eight number? That's more, I'm, I'm saying it, you're there, but I know that the city manager responds as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I believe in terms of the current staffing levels, um, you know, we don't, I think we're down one at fire.
Sorry?
We're down one at fire, but I believe in police, we're at the, I mean, there's some retirements that are happening, but once those happen, we'll be at our thirty-nine, basically, so.
That's my, uh, understanding as well, is that with the retirements, that we should be at thirty-nine in the police.
Actually, I think we're down to three, actually, in fire right now, uh, from the nineteen that we have.
Right.
We had to backfill two of them, um, and, uh, one of them, uh, who just got a resignation a week or two ago as well, so, um, that's where we're at at this point in time, with the fire. I'm gonna look out there, Rob, is that right?
Yes, yes.
So, it's sixteen currently.
Yeah, when I talk about the difference, I'm talking about what's budgeted for next year, so it would be down one from what's planned for next year, yeah. Down three from what had been approved, yeah, if that makes sense. But in terms of the number of PSOs, and you feel free to ask either of the chiefs this question, but it's my understanding that, um, on the police side, we're gonna have thirty-nine budgeted. There is one officer that is not in the PSO program, and there are some new officers still getting the training, but except for the chief and that one officer, and I think the chief was a PSO before he went to chief, so maybe you count him, maybe you don't, I don't know. But, um, except for that one officer that's not, uh, um, in the PSO program, the rest of them are either gonna get the training to be PSOs, or they already are PSOs.
How many fire are budgeted?
Uh, including the chief, it would be seventeen.
This may be something I, as we get through the rest of the presentation and comment at the end as well, I, there's a couple that are, I guess, I'll just say, reviews at this point, and kind of did some of the, uh, public safety discussion points. I, I think it's, just helps for clarification of understanding what, where we're currently at and where we're going and how we're gonna get there. Uh, there was a comment back about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and funding for that, it's coming out of this year's funding. I'd probably, maybe for the work session, I don't need it now, just a reminder of what that all entails and what the cost was. Uh, I know that we've, uh, have a, a pretty, um, robust park and recreations plan for the future, and some of those are quite, uh, extensive in cost, and I just want to understand under what the, the master plan, what that is, and putting that together of the future, where we're going to get. The other one I have in here is, as we get, move, continuing to forward, I know the city, uh, manager administration's having discussions regarding the pensions, so as that continues to develop with the, uh, bargaining units, because it is a significant amount that's, I'll just say, on hold, uh, as is, uh, potential, I, I don't know if I have it written down here at the top of my head, but somewhere around four hundred some thousand dollars. I don't know exactly, and correct me, please do. Four fifty, thank you. Uh, and as those updates come, because if those, uh, those discussions, uh, stall, that's other revenue that, that will have to be a consideration to meet what's being proposed, if I understand it correctly. Those, like, so I guess I say that only because of the fact of, you know, we, we have the budget reading and the second one in public meetings, but we have work session before the next one, there might be some updates we have on that.
Right now, we have forty-five thousand dollars budgeted for the Recreation Master Plan.
Thank you.
Um, and realistically, that's the, every five years, I believe it is, we have to update our master plan to be eligible, really, well, to do our planning, but also to be eligible for grants through the state, is, is one of the big reasons for doing it.
Part of that was the, just a clarification, because I know that we did the Parks and Rec plans, we put a lot of those out there, some of the public was very, very well engaged, which we appreciate as, as a, the city. And knowing that those, some of those are, were some, uh, uh, really large numbers, when you talk about redoing the plans, I don't want that to be misunderstood, that, you know, a, a plan that might have been something along the lines of a long-term of eight million dollars, is not what's being proposed here. It's a plan to, to have, make sure that we have the opportunity to get grant funding, opportunity to put plans forward when revenues are available in the council and, uh, uh, match grants or whatever might be there, to, to be expended, so we clarify that right out, that's why we'll make sure that.
And if I, you might just tell you, that, uh, it's a very good, uh, Parks and Rec plan that you have at this time, supplemented with the park plans that you just completed here in the last year. I don't envision this being a full-blown start-from-scratch type of, let's just update numbers and figures and, and, and go from there. I just don't see the purpose of, you know, starting all over again with the Parks and Rec plan, it's, uh, it just needs to be updated, so it's acceptable for being.
Right. As you say, stated, it can't be shelved, I'll just do that next year, because you really miss opportunities, and it's required to be done, uh, otherwise, we just won't have any, uh, movement forward in the future, so, thank you. Other, other questions right off now? If not, um, we can move on to the, uh, general. Non-general fund budget items and...
This will probably be quicker. So, the major street fund, um, when we say non-general funds, they, they come in multiple categories, and at the end, there's just a list here of some funds that I'm not gonna cover specifically. I'll, I'll give you a brief description of what they are, but, um, these other funds are set up primarily because they need to account for specific resources separately. Uh, sometimes state law requires them, in the case of the major and local street funds, um, and sometimes accounting standards require them, so, in case of the water wastewater funds. So, uh, there's various reasons why there's other funds, but, um, um, they're, they're kind of like a little separate business unit in themselves, and they have to keep track of their own activities. So, the major street fund accounts for our, our larger, more well-traveled streets in the city. Uh, uh, you know, when you did the capital improvement program, uh, CIP approval in February, you approved certain, uh, improvements to the major streets, those are included in the budget. Fun balance, at the end of the three-year budget period, is projected to be seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars there. Usually try to keep a minimum of four hundred thousand dollars in that fund, so there, there's a good, a, good, uh, fund balance there. Um, we also try to keep some there, because then we know next year, we're probably gonna have to draw on some of that to do some capital projects, so we try to keep some money in fund balance. Uh, the tran, the, we, the funding, primary funding for both the major street and the local street fund are the gas taxes that we receive through the state of, of Michigan and our distribution of them. And because we have an asset management plan in place, we're allowed to transfer some of our major street funds to our local street funds. Uh, this year, it, it has ranged over the years, we set that amount annually, based on what it looks like is needed in the local street fund, but this year, sixteen percent is recommended to be trans, of the, of the gas tax received in the major street fund is recommended to be transferred to the local street fund for, uh, those types of operations. And that, as, if you've heard, um, of the legislation signed recently by the governor, where we're gonna get an extra hundred forty-three thousand dollars this year, seventy-five percent of that amount goes into the major street fund, not budgeted to be spent on anything specific at this point. Uh, this is, uh, again, just a layout of the major street fund. It shows the main revenue sources at the top. Uh, you can see the state shared revenue and grants are, are really the, um, funds we get from the state. Uh, we do get some federal funding for, for major streets as well, about two hundred, ranges anywhere from two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and forty a year. Um, but, but then you see a total revenues there, and then you see the total appropriations, and you can see that, um, for the two thousand, for each year there, it shows a, a net revenue greater or less than expenditures amount. And, uh, this year's a little bit higher, it, it happens every year, some of those items that you approved in, in this year's CIP actually are still funded out of this year's budget. They kind of, the, the funding kind of gets advanced, so that's why that amount is negative compared to next year's positive number. But, uh, we also, in the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget, thought that we were gonna need to transfer some additional money from the major street funds to the local street funds for some local street improvements. About six hun, little over six hundred thousand dollars is included, as far as that goes, in that fiscal year, so that's why you're seeing a seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar reduction in the nineteen twenty fiscal year. So, you're not adopting that budget, it's just a projection, but that's what we're thinking it probably looks like at this point. The local street fund, again, is the, the non-major streets, um, less traveled streets. Uh, again, all the CIP funding that you approved is included. Uh, try, usually try to keep about a hundred thousand dollars minimum in this fund. Um, you know, these funds, in addition to doing the improvements, they do the day-to-day maintenance, um, including winter maintenance. So, if we were ever to have a, a huge winter, um, where we had to do a lot more snow removal, these funds would be responsible for paying those costs. And that's one of the reasons to keep some money in fund balance, is to cover those unexpected years. So, we try to keep at least a hundred thousand dollars there, and again, twenty-five percent of the additional state appropriation is included in the budget for this fiscal year. And then, again, this is the same type of, of display as the last one, and, um, you can see the, the ending fund balance number there is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So, uh, a lot of the funding for local street improvements or capital projects comes from the general fund. This fund really only generates maybe two hundred thousand dollars a year of its own that it can use on capital projects. Um, and, but, if you recall, uh, last year, we issued a Michigan Transportation Fund Bond to fund some improvements, and this, both of these funds are, are paying off those bond payments over the next six years as well. The refuse fund. So, in the refuse fund, currently, you know, we levy a refuse millage, and it's, that's the primary funding source, and it's recommended to be one point six three two mils next year. Uh, it, the services provided in the fund include street, or funded by the fund, include street sweeping, uh, catch basin cleaning, refuse and recyclables removal, which is basically the, uh, contract with waste management, but also our, our dumpsters that we have, uh, in various places, and that it also provides the leaf bags annually, that citizens can come and get from, from us to collect their leaves in. Um, the estimated fund balance, as of the end of this time period, is sixty-two, six seventy-nine, which is three point five percent of expenditures, and usually try to keep that as, at five percent. Um, didn't think it was necessary at this point to raise the millage rate further to meet that goal, we can review that again next year. But this year, we're implementing the new waste management agreement, and, uh, the county solid waste committee, um, is actually implementing a new fee that will be charged, uh, it's called a county generator fee, because our waste is, from waste management, is not deposited in a landfill here in the county. We don't pay some of the dumping fees or tipping fees at the landfill here in the county, but, um, now they're adding a county generator fee that we will have to pay, which is gonna add about forty thousand dollars a year to the city's cost, because it wasn't a fee that was known when we entered into the agreement with waste management, and so waste management through the contract has the ability to pass that along to the city. Um, so it is about forty thousand dollars a year, and that's gonna be, start showing up on our invoices in April. I mentioned the DPS vector rehabilitation, we budgeted about fifty thousand dollars for that. I'm not sure if that's gonna happen, it, because it looks like it would cost more than that to rehabilitate, rehabilitate that vector, so we may be looking at other options there. But all those things together generate this budget picture here, and you can see the total estimated revenues for each of the years there. And you can see the total estimated revenues for each of the years there. The appropriations line is the total estimated expenditures. And, um, you could see that if, you know, the, the, we're actually spending more than we're bringing in over the next three years, because we have a fund balance that's been built up that we can draw on to reduce that. If we didn't have that fund balance, we would actually have to increase that millage rate even higher to, so that we weren't spending more than, than what, uh, was coming in. So that's something to look out for in the future. I think that's it for that. Uh, the Building Safety Fund is the fund of the city where we account for all of our building inspections and all of our different trades inspections, such as plumbing, mechanical, electrical. We also account for the rental housing inspection program within that fund. What's included on your, um, ordinance that I presented is that rental housing inspection fee increase that I talked about. And, uh, we will be coming to you with, uh, a recommendation to increase building inspection fees. My, my initial, um, look at it says they should probably be increased about fifty percent. But we'll be, we actually have a meeting tomorrow to go over that a little bit more with the Building Department and figure out if that can be, um, adjusted. But also to look at the structure of things and determine if there's, um, certain permits that should come out of the regular fee schedule. Right now, a lot of the permits are based on the value of the project. So if a project costs me, is going to, is valued at ten thousand, it's, there's a schedule that it slots into and, and your permit fee is calculated based on the value of the project. There may be a way to take some things like, uh, for example, fences and say, okay, a fence is two hundred dollars, period, no matter what you got, and not apply it to that schedule. So there's some things like that that we may look at before we just, um, recommend bumping up the current schedule. So that's more to come on that. But, uh, this fund in the past has had a good fund size fund balance and it's allowed us over the last year to actually add a building inspector, a full-time building inspector and, and also continue on with a, a part-time inspector that had retired. But, um, the revenues have not kept up with where they've been in the past, because really of, of, there's two things. The, the permit volume hasn't been there. And in the past, we've had some bigger permits, you know, with DTE Energy or, or Max Steel. There's been some big permit fees that have built, helped to build that fund balance. Well, those haven't happened lately and we don't know of any for sure that are going to be happening in the future. So, uh, we're kind of trying to build a budget around what a normal year is for the Building Department. So as you can see, and what I talked about here is, in that first column, if you see the two thousand seventeen, eighteen projected activity, it's only projecting revenue of four hundred twelve thousand dollars. And, but expenditures are about six hundred twenty-seven thousand. So, um, it's been a, I would say, a slow year. There's still a quarter of the year to go, so maybe things will pick up. But, um, based on, you know, the same time period last year, added to what's already happened, that's what the projection is. So, um, we'll see how that goes. But, uh, the, the prior, in the following years, do project a fee increase and, uh, that would need to happen in order for this fund to stay out of a deficit. We are not allowed to budget a deficit. And if, if for some reason this fund did end, uh, end the year in a deficit, we would be required to submit a budget elimination plan, or excuse me, a deficit elimination plan with the Michigan Department of Treasury. So, that's the Building Safety Fund. Just a note on the Budget Stabilization Fund, it's two million dollars. No revenues or expenditures are planned for it next fiscal year. The Airport Fund, it's, you know, uh, accounts for the operations of Monroe-Custer Airport. Its main revenue sources are fuel sales and hangar rentals, rental of the hangar space out there. In recent years, partially due to the loss of some fuel sales and some bigger customers, the General Fund has had to start supplementing the, the funds there. That's something we want to do, but it's like, just like the Gen, or the Building Safety Fund, you can't run a deficit. So we had to do things like that. Also had a bigger capital project this fiscal year. So this year, about fifty-five thousand is required to fund the operations of the airport from the General Fund. Going forward, forty thousand per year is budgeted, but, um, we'll see how that goes. We do, we do probably need to look at where our hangar rental fees are. We did look at, I did look at the fuel, um, charges last year and, and thought they were in line and thought what the staff was doing in order to set those fees was in line. So I didn't have any issue with those and didn't think they needed to be adjusted. But it's a pretty small fund. Expenditures are roughly two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. And, uh, we try to keep funds and fund balance so that when the capital project, uh, or capital projects that require matching funds from the state come about, that we have those funds in the Airport Fund to make those matching, uh, amounts. The General Debt Service Fund is, it, it, it's a fund that accounts for various bond payments the city has issued. Three of them, or four of them, related to the bridges, uh, the DDA parking lot are the main bond payments. That's, you know, those are bonds. When I say bonds, those are debt issues that we've done to finance bridge improvements. The DDA did the parking project at, uh, over, across the river from Saint Mary's Park, um, those type of things. But the Bridge Millage goes in there to fund the bridge, uh, payments. There's some City Hall bond pay, or some of those bond issues had some City Hall improvements funding in them. And, and so the General Fund transfers some money in there to pay those.
Yeah? Talk a little bit about that capital improvements, uh, the, the bridge project. I've had a couple people ask, uh, you know, why would we do the City Hall, uh, this chamber renovation when we're potentially looking at positions being eliminated? The funds in this, uh, bond issue are, what's remaining left from the, from the General Fund. Can't use it for any other operating purpose. And as Ed alluded to, uh, Also are using some of our franchise fees, uh, associated for, you know, public access, uh, education, uh, to, to fund the project itself. But we can't get that back into the General Fund too, for some of the positions that we're in question out there. So, um, I just wanted to throw that out there. It's an entirely separate, uh, source. You didn't spend the money on it. It sits there until our last bond payment in what, twelve years from now or so? And, and you can't use it for any other purpose other than what was designated there. And then the last part of it is, if you, you know, keep hammering that, and you gotta address your infrastructure over the next twenty years. If not now, then when do you do it? And so, but I just want to make it clear, the, the project itself has got a separate dedicated funding source, independent of, uh, money that can be used back for, for personnel.
So this is what the, um, numbers look like for the General Debt Service Fund. We've got a large portion of the funding there is from property taxes. There is some money coming in from the General Fund and the DDA to pay, uh, uh, debt payments that aren't related to the bridges. So the City Hall improvements that were done through a bond issue, through the bond issues are, are coming from the General Fund and the DDA pays its debt payment into this fund. So we, I did budget in the last year, two thousand twenty-one, and I believe it's about, it looks like about a hundred, maybe around two hundred thousand dollars, um, for a potential payback if we were to have to, uh, have a, uh, either a settlement or an adverse decision and a tax appeal. All right. So the Stores and Equipment Fund, again, is the, it's an internal service fund. We have a, a couple of internal service funds. And what that means is that the fund provides services to other city departments. It doesn't provide services to the citizens at all. It's, it's meant to be an accounting function where the, the fund provides services to other city departments. And so this fund's main job is for, uh, the city's fleet operations. So, um, for example, when the, when the Department of Public Services uses a truck to plow the roads, that truck is owned by the Stores and Equipment Fund. That truck can't be owned by the major or local street funds. It has to be charged back on a rental basis as it's used to those major and local street funds. So this fund owns it and as it's used, its use is tracked and charged back to every, every, uh, two-week pay period to those funding sources. That's one example, but we also have some vehicles that, you know, for example, the police department, they keep their cars year-round. Nobody else uses them. So they're set up on a monthly charge. It's not a use basis. But that's the main funding source for this fund is, is those pieces of equipment are either rented back to the other departments as they use them or on a fixed monthly, uh, fee based on, uh, the fact that they're the only ones that are going to use it and it's completely assigned to them. There's some other small items included in there, such as lawn mowers and small tractors and things like that. The DPS facilities are actually owned by this fund. So this fund is responsible for maintaining those facilities out there. Revenue sources we talked about. Uh, we also get a, um, the, the proceeds of our cell tower lease go into this fund as well. The two primary employees out there are two mechanics that work there. But as other DPS employees do work that's related to the, uh, Stores and Equipment Operation or Fleet Operation, their time gets charged there as well. Uh, the operations supervisor, uh, and some of the office staff all charge some of their time there as they spend time working out there. The fund, primary issue with the fund is that it has a lot of old equipment that needs replacement. And not a built-up reserve to be able to pay for it. So, uh, this is actually the same list that I presented yes, last year. Uh, this was provided by DPS, so not, not by me. But, um, you know, these are some of the big pieces of equipment that need, that are old and need to be replaced. The, the, this, the year we're planning to replace them is on the left there and their age, or the year they were acquired is on the right there. It's possible, or at least we're planning by the end of this fiscal year, that those tandem trucks will be purchased. Anything that's on this list really is going to need to be financed, because the fund just does not have, uh, the funds to purchase them on its own at this point. So, um, it's a pretty big issue that we're having to deal with. And I would say that a lot of these things are planned for financing within the three-year period. But based on some discussions that are going on about operations and how things are going to be handled, I, I couldn't tell you which ones are going to be purchased first and whether all of them are going to be purchased at this point. But that's a list, a general list, if we had to buy everything, of about what it looks like. Based on the budget that's put together and the cash flow projection that's there, it's, it's looking like about three hundred thousand per year that the fund can finance on its own. Anything more than that would need to be financed or funded potentially by other city funds, could be the general, primarily the General Fund, I would think. But I have a slide here that's going to show you all the working capital. When I say working capital, it's the shorter-term assets of the fund, works out over the three years. But it's using up a lot of it just to buy new equipment. And then the rental rates that we charge for, especially for those items that go, get charged back to the street funds have to be on MDOT's rate schedule. So we don't have any flexibility there in terms of what we can charge. It's very, very little into, actually in terms of what we can charge, can set ourselves. But this is a, a look at the working capital. And, and I guess the main thing I wanted to show you here is based on the budget that's set is, and when I say working capital, it's not, it's, it's the short, when, short-term assets, less short-term liabilities. But as of the end of last fiscal year, it was about five hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. But based on this budget and, you know, spending about three hundred thousand dollars a year out of the fund on equipment and also financing some new equipment over the three years, uh, we get down to about four thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars by the end. So while that's not acceptable, it's something that for at least the short term will be okay. And at, at this point next year, when we're putting the budget together, we'll, uh, reevaluate and decide what needs to be done there. We did, for the fees we can set, we did increase them this year, but just this year. And we didn't project increases in the following year, so that may have to happen, uh, in the future. Um, I just threw this in here. I just had a presentation from Annette Knowles about the Downtown Development Authority. But, you know, over the four-year period, this is what their budget looks like. So I'm not going to go into that at all, but it's, it is exactly what she presented at, at your last work session. And I get to sit down and turn it over to Barry, unless you have any questions about the non-general funds we've already gone over.
No questions at this point. If not, we'll continue. We may have questions and items at the end collectively that we'll bring forward. Thank you. Thanks, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, for the record, Barry Leroy, Director of Water and Wastewater for City Metro. Okay, so I'll, uh, I'll start with the wastewater department, since that's the order that, uh, Ed has established. So, um, so our goals for the upcoming fiscal year, uh, we're planning on maintaining our staffing level at twenty-five point one, full-time equivalent. I know it's an odd number. We have a part-time, uh, working there. At the plant, we plan on, uh, exceeding our water quality and regulatory compliance requirements with our NPDS permit. That's our discharge permit into the lake. With our current NPDS permit, it's, uh, we call it the new permit, because it just started, uh, recently. We have a asset management program that we're required to implement. It's been funded for, through a SAW grant, which, uh, we'll be completing all the tasks by the end of October of this year. And, uh, we, we've completed all the tasks with what's called the Project Performance Certification. That is related to a project we did in two thousand fourteen. It's our equalization basin and inflow infiltration removal. And, uh, we, uh, did not obtain enough data to actually certify that project. So we actually have to go into what's called the corrective action plan, which, uh, we are currently negotiating a schedule with the NVQ on that. We're looking at a long-term solution for that. That will include, uh, flow monitoring throughout the whole system. We'll be developing a sewer model for the entire system, which will help us pinpoint, uh, areas that need addressing, like inflow infiltration areas or where we need to put online storage. And then we'll also build into the Pro-Medic hospital relocation, uh, so make sure we have enough capacity in those areas as well. I will, uh, completing our four capital improvement program projects that, uh, that was approved back in February. Uh, we'll be, starting something new this upcoming fiscal year. We'll actually be funding some inspections for, uh, currently, uh, our staff do them, but, uh, on a more regimented and larger scale base, we'll be focusing on, um, so if we see a facility that has, uh, roof leaders going into the ground, um, we want to help verify that that's going to the proper sewer, storm sewer, for example, not getting into the sanitary. We're trying to remove inflow and infiltration. Sump pumps, we're doing dye tests, uh, point-of-sale inspections is really what we're talking about. The whole idea is to address sewer use violations. So that's in this upcoming fiscal year budget. And we'll continue educating customers with our footing drain disconnection program, where we partially fund those improvements as well as, uh, sewer backup mitigation measures and help reduce fats, oils, and greases that can back up our system. This next slide is, uh, just a, uh, three-year running, uh, from past fiscal years, as well as the projected and requested fiscal year. The yellow here is our debt service. Uh, we have quite a bit of debt at the wastewater, uh, in the wastewater system. So it's a major component of our, um, expenditures. The red is our total expenses, which is our capital outlay and desired reserves. And the green is our revenue, uh, as well as our desired working capital. And, uh, the slide down below there just kind of shows that they really mesh well and the rate model is functioning the way it's designed. So we're keeping in balance. So, so our upcoming fiscal year expenditures, the, the overall budget increases are in the fringe benefit area. And I'll talk about that specifically. The municipal fees increases, the labor and depreciation. Specifically, the pension, um, it's a large increase. It's a big number shown there. But realistically, that's already built into our rate model from last year. The only difference is, uh, it was a slight increase from last year to this year. So that is built into it and forecast, um, into the rate model. We have increased insurance. The overall cost to the, for a full-time equivalent has increased about nine percent with this upcoming budget. Chemicals are increasing to help us, uh, clarify the water. And, uh, retiree healthcare and our sludge disposal where we landfill. Um, and at the bottom are efficiencies that, uh, just highlighting some of the things we do to help us try to keep our expenditures down. And, uh, with our asset management program, we're currently, uh, it's currently in operation, but we have a few more tasks to complete before we finish that. So the next slide is our, uh, the top one is our connections. Uh, these are active connections based on like how many reeds we do a year. And, uh, those continue to slightly increase each year. And at, on the bottom is the, the usage. So, uh, there, there's that phenomena where people are just using less water, but there's still active connections. So that, that split continues. And, uh, I have a slide coming up where we actually have to project in that manner, a slight decrease. So what does that mean for the upcoming fiscal year? We, we have a, a lot of debt and, um, one of the items that, uh, in our revenue, uh, method for collection for fees is our bond recovery charge. We're recommending an increase to that. And that is scaled, uh, relatively, um, based on the classifications. I'll hit this bullet here in a second. We'll also recommend. We'll also recommend an increase on the commodity, a slight increase of that. We're trying to get the right split between, uh, our fixed costs, uh, for revenue charging as well as our volunteer portion, which is how much water you would use and get built for the sewer portion. So with this upcoming fiscal year, I'm proposing to, uh, perform a study to look at our, uh, read charge, which we're proposing to maintain this next fiscal year and to look at these bond recovery charges. So, uh, and to build it into a model that, uh, uh, fits into, uh, by, by, based on meter size. Um, and the reason for that is, uh, we'll, uh, it'll be Bolt versus Lansing tested, which is a landmark case, which, uh, uh, basically we don't want to be overcharging for fees. We want to make sure we get the right split. Um, and then with that study, we'll also be looking at, uh, the meter recharge, which, uh, which is what both the metropolitan system and our Frenchtown gets paid, uh, for each meter read. So we want to make sure that, uh, uh, those are balanced and, uh, appropriately being paid for. So, uh, with the rates, we're proposing to maintain the recharge as well as, uh, the septic dumping fee and, uh, all the surcharges. Uh, so to the average customer, which is the residential, commercial, government and church classifications, it's about a 6.8% increase, um, and it's about 25 dollars a year. And, uh, then the sewer flat customers, uh, those are the folks that don't have water meters. Um, they, it's about 24 dollars a month. Uh, what's important to note is, uh, to, to make sure our rates are affordable, uh, we do test those in accordance with, uh, the EPA uses, uh, the, the median household income. So, uh, checking that for our, uh, different service areas as well as what's called the second quintile household income. It's our, it's like the second lowest income. Um, it's a new, it's based on some new research to help us make sure that rates are affordable. Um, and, uh, we definitely are below that with our annual cost. So, uh, here's a breakdown of all the different elements that are, make up that 6.8% increase. It's labor costs, uh, municipal fees, uh, declining usage. Um, and this slide at the bottom kind of illustrates that. 2007, 2008 was the highest use that we ever recorded. And, uh, you can see it's slightly decreasing and, uh, we're right here right now, um, where we're projecting to be. Uh, also, uh, capital improvement financing. Uh, we have to make sure we continue to improve our infrastructure, um, as well as, uh, fund our depreciation, uh, for replacements. The rate model does include, uh, the corrective action plan funding, uh, which is a bond that will likely occur in the next couple of years, uh, as well as that sewer model study, inspection measures, um, and, uh, future, uh, capital improvements and our, uh, to meet our desired working reserves that we have to maintain as an operation. Um, and then again, that slide down below illustrates it, but the, uh, the information, the metropolitan system is, uh, uh, made up of the City Monroe, Monroe Township and, uh, Raisinville Township. Uh, that's about, that's about two-thirds of the system. And it's down about 24% since, uh, 2007, 2008. And, uh, Frenchtown's down about 21%.
The significance of that is, uh, I would consider a very high-end cost operation. If your usage plummets the way it does, uh, the spread of it, the ongoing operating cost is in part to, in fact, I, what I forgot to do is to send you, uh, I'll put it in the mailbox, but there's an article out of the Wall Street Journal talking about this phenomenon between, uh, you know, declining, uh, consumption, uh, and, uh, you know, decades of deferred payments. Are you seeing, uh, nationwide, uh, water and sewer rates increasing certainly at a faster rate than the consumer price index? So I'll throw that in there, but it does give you some context for some of the challenges that we face, not only here in Monroe, but nationwide as well.
Right. As far as, uh, comparing the rates regionally, um, uh, the next slide is just showing where Monroe Metropolitan lists, uh, on an annual basis for cost, comparing it to, uh, regional systems. Uh, we're still at like spot number 11. Um, and, um, I mentioned this before, but, uh, like the City of Woodhaven, Flat Rock, um, Y and Dot, uh, some of these systems, they're, they're just collection systems, they're not treatment systems, they don't have a plant. Um, and, uh, then there's smaller systems that don't, uh, absorb, uh, large industrial customers as well. So, uh, we are definitely, uh, maintaining, uh, our expenditures as well as, uh, affordability-wise, we're doing pretty well as well. I just wanted to point that out. So is there any other questions with wastewater before I move on to water?
I don't see any at this point, so I'd say continue with the water, please.
Okay. So, uh, here's the goals for the water. Um, we're proposing to increase a half a position for maintaining our operations and service level as well as projects. Um, and, um, to 28 full-time equivalents. Uh, we have a lot of new regulatory and, uh, compliance requirements in drinking water. Um, and that's what that half a part-time position would be helping for, primarily in the, uh, third bullet, which is the residential cross-connection control program. That came from a, uh, short-term requirement from the state with our, uh, what's called our sanitary survey. They do that every three to five years. Um, well, so we'll be starting that July 1st of this year. There, there'll be billing stuffers included with the water bills that'll be coming out this last quarter of the fiscal year. Um, optimized corrosion control. Uh, we've been engaged with the state for about a year as well as a consultant. Uh, we've done lots of testing and sampling. Uh, we actually got the permit last week and, uh, we, uh, have a plan that we have to submit to, uh, do a six-month study to make sure we dial in the dose correctly. Uh, so we'll be ready for the new regulations that'll likely be coming out, which is the, what'll lead into the 2018 lead and copper legislation. That'll be, um, that's being negotiated right now, uh, and proposed, I should say. There's lots of nuances with that, but the, the big highlight items are, uh, lead, lead service line replacements. And, um, they're requiring water systems to pay for non-public type service lines. So like, uh, in our case, it would be galvanized lines. Uh, we did not put those in, those were put in by private owners, but they're requiring water systems to front that cost. Um, so there's a lot of, uh, discussion going on and, uh, uh, in order to make sure that that meets both legal requirements and, uh, affordability requirements. Um, in our situation, that would be about 2,700 locations right now. Um, and that's about a $9 million cost, so. So there's lots of other short-term and long-term requirements that will be, uh, uh, built into this upcoming budget that we'll be working on. On top of that, we have, uh, reduced DTE water use. Uh, I may have mentioned this at some past, uh, presentations. They're looking at starting this, this second quarter of, uh, 2018, actually. Overall, our water system has about a 25% reduction, uh, since, uh, like 2006. Um, this, uh, will further reduce that. Uh, and that's built into this upcoming fiscal year budget as well. Uh, as I mentioned numerous times, maintaining funding for renewing infrastructure. Uh, in, in accordance with our asset management plan, that's, that's a must, uh, in order to, uh, at least maintain service levels. Uh, I did mention the, we have about 700 lead service lines and about 2,000 of suspected galvanized lines that, uh, this new litigation, uh, legislation would be, uh, requiring us to replace. Um, within this budget, we're starting, uh, uh, radio, or, excuse me, our meter reads that are, uh, meter, water meters. Uh, they're at 15 years and older. Uh, we have about 6,400 of those over about a seven-year period that will have to be replaced. Our radio system that we read, uh, currently it's drive-by. We're looking at what's called a fixed base system. And this will really help engage customers to, uh, with their water use on a daily basis if they really want to. We'll be able to read meters right from City Hall here, we'll be on our own server. And the benefit with that is, uh, we help, it'll help us, uh, close the gap on unaccounted for water. We'll be able to detect, uh, uh, water meters that fail, uh, leaks that are happening for customers. Um, there's lots of benefits with this that, uh, can be used as well as potentially go to monthly billing, uh, relatively soon. So it'll be a cash flow benefit for, uh, finance as well. And then, uh, last bullet on there is Algo Bloom, um, our water source, uh, this, which is the Western Basin Lake Erie. Uh, lots of measures to, uh, keep the water safe for, uh, consumption. Uh, that's a major challenge. So here's a revenue trend and expense trend, uh, similar to the wastewater one. Again, the, uh, the red is the total expense and the green is the revenue. You can see they're very closely paired, uh, for the last five years. Again, uh, we're just trying to, we're trying to run with a balanced budget every year. Uh, the next slide is, uh, overall budget. Again, fringe benefits, city fees, labor, operation and maintenance as well as depreciation. Again, pensions, the highlight with, uh, that, uh, increase, which again, that was built in. There was a slight increase from the prior year though, uh, that's, uh, that's now that we've been recognized. As you guessed, we are ramping up our water service renewals. So that's about a 21% increase, uh, to make sure that we're on target to, uh, help us remove those. The cost per staff person is going up as well as insurances, retiree healthcare and chemicals. Um, and this slide here is just a bullet of, uh, all the different efficiencies, similar to the wastewater one, that help us, uh, uh, keep our costs down. They are a challenge, especially the infrastructure and, uh, maintaining systems to make sure that, uh, we can provide the service. Similar trends with connections as well as, uh, consumption. Um, again, this 18, 19 fiscal year has that built-in DTE reduction for usage. And, uh, you can see there's slight increases in connections, uh, that we will, uh, be recognized as well. So the proposed water rates, um, we're proposing to maintain the fire line charges. There's no, uh, requirement to increase that based on the calculations. The, uh, pump surcharge does, uh, need to increase, uh, to help make sure that we're, uh, staying in the black on that. Our system development fees, that's the buying, um, fee for, uh, a customer that's new to the system. Uh, that hasn't been increased in several years. Uh, we check that cost every year and, uh, it, we definitely need to increase it this upcoming fiscal year. It's based on the value of the system as well as the number of equivalent, uh, water meters in there, the system. The, uh, administrative recharge is recommended to increase by a dollar as well as the debt service charge, and I have a table on the next slide for that. And then the commodity charge would slightly increase as well. This, uh, table is, uh, on the left is, uh, the water meter sizes. For a city resident, this would be their quarterly fee based on meter size. And the non-resident would be out of the city. Um, and this is the combination of the debt service and the administration charge combined. Uh, this is the fire line charges. Again, those are recommended to stay the same. And then this is the system development fees based on meter size. Uh, over 95% of the system are the five-eighth inch meters. So typically customers are connecting with a five-eighth inch. So it's recommended to increase it from 1,400 to 2,000. So how does that compare for, uh, how does that affect our rates overall and on a, on a regional basis? So, uh, the City Monroe is doing pretty well. We're still, uh, yeah, top three at this point. Uh, the overall rate increase, uh, is about a 10.7% increase. Customers outside the city, um, is about a 10.1% increase. And then the customers that are, uh, get the water re, cert, uh, has a surcharge due to re, repressurized is about a 10% increase. Uh, and the wholesale customers are down the bottom. Uh, they have a, about a little over eight, almost a 9% increase. Again, we checked, uh, the, for water, it's two and a half percent. Where wastewater's 2% of the household incomes. And, uh, we definitely are below those limits. So, uh, this slide here is, uh, kind of explaining the different areas where the, uh, 10% inc, 10.7% increase have fallen. There's operation and maintenance and depreciation. Labor costs, city fees, uh, declined use as well as, uh, maintaining our infrastructure costs with capital financing. Um, and then you can see here, we've kind of built in, you know, with this regressive drop in usage, uh, we have to be realistic and build in a flat or, uh, slightly less use each year as well. Um, or you can see right here, this 18, 19 fiscal years where we have that built in that DTE reduction. So since 2005, 2006, the City Monroe has had about a third drop in usage, uh, with this upcoming bus, uh, budget year. And, uh, that makes up 55% of the system. So it's hard to believe it's dropped that much. Um, but again, we're well over half the system's usage. The four jurisdictions up here make up 94% of the system overall. So again, uh, low, low-flow fixtures, um, a lot of customers don't irrigate anymore. Um, there's, there's lots of incentives to not use water, uh, like they have in the past. So, um, that just continues to challenge us with, uh, trying to find ways to operate more efficiently, so. Any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of comments or maybe questions from, uh, Council, maybe just for some, uh, information purposes. I know at the, uh, on the wastewater side, I'll start there. Wastewater Control Board has, uh, reviewed this presentation and, uh, motioned to, uh, accept that because that's a partnership with the City of Monroe, Frenchtown Township and Monroe Township. I'm sure that was mentioned, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Right.
That, uh, it now moves forward here in our budget, uh, discussions. So that, that's just one point I want to make. The other on the water side is more of a comment, I guess, is, because you referred to the, uh, items. I always say there's external items that impact how, um, municipalities and townships and others can function. And there's, uh, the discussion going on in the lead and copper rules in, in Lansing and potential legislation. And you highlighted those on here as new items, uh, that, uh, about standards. And it's not a matter of not wanting to meet, uh, health and clean water and safe standards in the city. And I think that, uh, over the years, the, uh, yourself, Barry, and your staff and the city has, uh, well managed that through an appropriate, an appropriate asset management plan. Recognize it when there's a deficiency or an issue and to address that and having partnership with the residents that can have their water tested, uh, when we take care of lines that need to be removed. Moving forward and looking at this type of legislation that's being proposed, it's just, uh, there's, um, a lot of conversation going on and we're going to see where it all ends up. But it necessarily doesn't, uh, it bypasses any type of, in my opinion, uh, some long-term asset management plan and simply looking at the fact that we're just going to reduce levels and then go in and tell everybody these lines are immediately going to be moved. And the amount you said is correct, we did a kind of an analysis just in the City of Monroe. And I thank you for that, Barry, was, uh, you're talking eight to nine million dollars that will have to be funded immediately. When, while water quality and, uh, uh, you know, the lead in water is an important issue, there's many other items in the, in our, our communities, uh, has a higher impact of, of lead contamination when you talk about lead-based paint, lead dust, things like that. And that's why I know with the purpose, uh, we look at our demolitions that are coming up this year. And, and, and it's, and it's been a process to get there. Part of it's funding, part of it's make sure we do it correctly, make sure the asbestos abatements are done. But just demoing houses and picking it all up and, and disposing of it, you think about the lead paste, uh, lead, uh, based paint that's in those homes. I know, uh, a community that's had, uh, hundreds and hundreds of homes that have been demolished, did some testing after the fact and found out the, uh, contamination was risen from what was previously thought just for that reason, because when you take it out, the dust is there. So I think about Lansing and, and pending legislation while it, it's a reaction to things that weren't done correctly. Overstepping that then is, is going to place a lot of the funding to be all in one area, when in fact, uh, larger, there's a larger area to be of concern when you talk about lead contamination that there is no funding or discussion on. And I, I think that's why when you talk about, um, municipal, Michigan Municipal League, SEMCOG and others are looking at a broader, make sure it's asset management planned as well as a broad-based plan of considering all forms of contamination. It's a little bit of platform and I think we've talked about it before, but I think it's important that residents understand the impacts of when you talk about costs and budgeting and financing, when there's external legislative mandates that don't come with general fund support, are going to have to be funded in some fashion. That's not the case currently in the water side, but we know that it's pending. So that's, the slide here is, I think, important for Council to review through as we look at those because there will be some potential mandates and how we, uh, come across those things. Working with our legislators to make sure that we, they get that message to, uh, them, but also to Lansing through other organizations is important. Um, some of that's on private property. I don't know how we go on private property and, and with public funds to replace all that as well. It's a big issue, so I'm just kind of making that as a clarification. I think, uh, it, uh, one of the last slides shows, just before this here, one or two, showed about the, where we, where we sit in our rate model, uh, right there. When you talk about jurisdictions and, and rates and costs, uh, the residents should pay attention to that. Sure, there's an increase and it's, and it's going from, you know, for instance, 196 to, uh, uh, 12, 12. 12, 12. I'm looking at the slide there.
It's about a, from last year, it's about an $18 increase for the whole year.
Right. So yeah, there's, and I understand that we're, people are, are going to inquire about rate increases and that, but when you look at the overall, where we sit and the value, the quality that we receive and actually we should be thankful, but also recognize we're going to monitor and make sure we're not just raising for unforeseen or unreasonable nothing. We'll be having an asset management plan of how we go about doing this. So I appreciate that Barry. That's just more commentary than this question. I think it's important to look at these slides as, as here of the council, but also those present and those watching that really look into the details of that rather than just sometimes the bottom line. I think that was a point as well on the waste management side as well. Thank you. I'll just ask, are there's other questions for Mr. Leroy from council members? I don't see any. Unless you're going to do the port one Barry, I think they're going to turn it back over stretched, ready to go.
Yeah, it felt good to sit down. I got to remember to get a chair for next year. So I just want to say before we go on that budget ordinance that you have, the exhibit has most of the fees that Barry talked about there. Yeah, system development fee, he's going to, must we talk about it? But right now the plan is to do that with a separate action outside of the budget ordinance. So that, that won't be listed on your exhibit there. But the rest of the fees that he talked about are on there and will be, are recommended to be approved with the budget ordinance. He does a great job with his budgets. I mean alone between water and wastewater, that's probably at least $16 million in operating expenditures. He's, if you want to sit down with him and get confused, you can go over the rate models with him, but he, he does a great job with them. I don't have to spend much time with him, so I'm really happy that he's doing that. So we're in good shape there. The Port of Monroe, so the, the Port Board did adopt this budget on March 21st at their meeting. And the port has changed a lot over year, over the years, primarily since the Director Paul Lamar has been there. They're generating quite a bit more revenue in terms of rentals and facility use and tonnage on their own now. In the past, it used to be that the city would levy a millage anywhere from a quarter up to a half a mil and that was the bulk of the port's funding. But now they're actually getting more funding outside of that source than what, than what they're generating, than what we give them as an appropriation now. So it's, it's, the budget has changed a little bit and expanded a little bit. What it shows here is you've got, and I'm going to look at the, the yellow highlighted column, which is next year's budget recommendation, but you've got 503,000 in operating revenue primarily from land rental and facility use and tonnage. And if you, oops, I'm thinking this is a spreadsheet, trying to move down here, that doesn't work that way. But then you've got operating expense of 871,000 broken up in those various categories there. So they're actually, from their operations, they're spending $368,000 more than they're bringing in. And there's some notes on there right there in terms of what those categories are for. You know, it does say that they're intending to add a part-time person to the staff. Some of the other items are self-explanatory, so I won't go into those very much. But then on the next page, it gets into some of their non-operating areas and that's where you see the $400,000 that are, is received from the city. And that's what funds those, that difference in the non-operating costs are in the operating section. They've got some loans that they've taken out, so there's some debt service amounts there. And then they're expecting what their loan from the Strategic Fund from the State of Michigan where they're doing the improvements to the dock area down there. Those are, that loan is supposed to be funded by Brownfield Authority tax captures and that's what that $30,000 represents there. So all in all, it's a revenues equal expense in the budget as projected by the port at this point. And I will say that, you know, the city does send them $400,000, but out of that, they're paying back $10,000 a year in a loan to the city that was made a few years ago. And then also they're funding $50,000 towards economic development, development activities from their budget back to the city as well. So the net is probably more like 340,000. That's it for the port budget. Now these are some of the other funds that we budget and happy to give you more information on any of them if you're interested. I'm just going to do a brief, real, hopefully real brief description of them. The parking fund pays for the parking enforcement function, but it also pays for the maintenance of the parking lots as well. If we were to charge enough and earn enough there, it could also replace parking lots when they need to be replaced. But at this point, there's only about $120,000 in the fund balance there and probably not likely that that's going to be a funding source for that at this point. The Economic Development Fund was funded many years ago by the closure of a TIF district, Tax Increment Financing District. Realistically, the funds there that are available have been spent on the local costs related to the battlefield property acquisition. So there's not really any excess funds there at this point. They are, the fund is still receiving funds from some loans that were made for Brownfield improvements. And those funds will be in the fund, but they have very specific uses for them, so they can't be just spent on any different thing. They have to be spent on other Brownfield-type activities. And as those projects come up, they'll be available for that. The Drug Law Enforcement Fund receives funding from drug forfeitures that the police take in outside of the mantis operation. And so there, the funds that go in there can be used on basically any law enforcement function, but we primarily use it to purchase bulletproof vests, some equipment purchases, the records management software that was discussed earlier, that is being discussed with the county on what to do with that and how to replace it is, is one option for using those funds in the future. The Grant Fund primarily accounts for the CDBG grant that is funding the city receives. The Capital Projects Fund receives funds from other funds, primarily the General Fund and other grant funds to account for capital projects. The Raw Water Intake Fund is accounted for as an enterprise fund. Basically it, it runs the intakes out of Lake Erie into the city's water plant and also Frenchtown Township's water plant. And the costs that that fund incurs are to charge, charge back proportionately either to the city water fund or to Frenchtown Township. So whatever costs it takes in, it charges back out and usually it's a zero-based operation. But the funds that it does generate for, for covering its depreciation costs are then used for capital improvements. The Information System Fund pays for the city's IT operation, both operations and capital improvements. Kind of went over the capital items earlier in the presentation. The Employee Benefits Fund and the Insurance Fund are internal service funds. So the Employee Benefits Fund covers the cost of the city's health insurance benefits, basically all current employee fringe benefits except for retirement benefits. And those costs are charged back to the other, to the city departments as a funding option. And then the Insurance Fund is an, also like I said, and also an internal service fund that covers the city's property and liability insurance. And if we have claim deductibles, it comes out of there as well. Retiree healthcare, you know about, that's the trust fund for retiree healthcare benefits. Cemetery Fund is the, is the fund that funds the operations of the Woodland Cemetery. The General Fund funds about $30,000 a year towards that operations. Other, the rest of the funding comes in through fees, 20 to 30,000 there as well. The Expendable Trust Fund, named before my time here, was, is a fund that kind of accounts for donations and other small grant-type things that the city receives that, that really shouldn't be funded for, be funded in the General Fund or the Capital Projects Fund. So as we get them and the donor gives us the funds, we, we put them there. An example of what's going there is we're the, the lease agreement with the Sawyer Homestead. We bill $5,000 a year to the Sawyer Homestead. The funds go in that fund, they stay there from year to year, and then we use them for the purposes of the funding when, when they're there. So it accumulates those types of funds. And the Brownfield Authority accounts for the activities of the Brownfield Authority. Some, probably go on a long time about that one, but I'll leave it at that for tonight. So I think that's it. Questions, discussions?
Vince, any comments to start? If not, we can go to see if council has any direction for now.
Lot to go through in a couple hours.
Sure. I would say if there's any other information, like other reports you'd like to see, more detailed information, I can provide them. Just please email me or call me, whatever.
As we move forward from here, of course, our next meeting, in the general scheduled meeting, they'll be moving forward with, being on the agenda as well as the follow-up second reading. And then eventually by the end of April, we're required by charter to make sure we have a budget proposal submitted and approved by council. I have a couple items, I don't want to stop the council members, if they have some comments, I'll start there. But you know, as I, I look at this as an overview and I started my conversation before, there are external things that impact budget and then of course our General Fund. In the end, we have to internally look to how we, how we manage that and how we move forward. You know, the budget presentation tonight, I thought was interesting because we also see manager put in the goals and objectives. And I think the hard work that was done by the council and staff as we move forward to come up with a pretty robust list of goals and objectives from earlier discussions, you know, there, there's times when you have to also be realistic as we look at that. And, and I think there's, I think that we have good goals and objectives. I think we have things that are out there that we have focus on, but also comes the reality sometimes when you, how, how do we get some of those done? It's not just always time, personnel, but sometimes budgetary. I think that's a process we'll work through as we get through the year. I'm not saying that we're going to have revisions, but I think there will be discussions on components of that because that's the reality in the end. What can we get achieved and make sure that we prioritize what's important to be done, not only our goals and objectives, but also delivering the services through our General Fund obligations. So I think we'll have some things that we'll probably have a conversation there. An important component, I think, in that, goals and objectives and as we're also funded as we look up there, when you talk about economic and community development that we continue to do and have done for years, infrastructure improvements that are there. And of course it gets to the one that we've had some conversation already and seems to be the conversation that comes up, I don't say annually, but is, is because of the volume of what it is within the General Fund, of course, the public safety. And I think some of the questions were asked by council, myself already, when we talk about some of the personnel and how we look at that, makes me, you know, it says, you know, changes to expect. I, I think that in our next council meeting, maybe in a work session, I, I would like to hear personally some of the comments from the Fire Chief and Police Chief of how we're going to see those projects and programs come together. I think that was the, the short-term and long-term service and staffing was one of the bullet points that was on one of the slides. Also talking about improving coordination, I think there's much that we can do to make sure we're utilizing the personnel and the services and the operational side the best that we can. I just, you know, whether it be operational, whether it be training, whether it be, you know, how we assign things, there's many items I think that are there. I know that some of the equipment that's been purchased or being purchased, I think was presented well in the budget because you have to have the equipment and the apparatuses to, to provide the service. And I know we talked here in the past year or so about that when it came up in ISO rating. But there's also things I think internally that make better efficiencies and what impact that has, whether it be about training, operations, deployments, those type of things I think are, kind of what I'm looking at as we move forward in a, a discussion, instead of just trying to make a budgetary discussion, but understanding as a council, how all those things intertwined to make sure that we're making the best decisions and that. So just my thought, when you talk about on the police side, you know, what is, what is the patrol operations and of course our staffing levels in both police and fire, patrol detective, the vice unit and how important that is, and we talk about some of the impacts in our community. And then the mantis units, unit that we have operation support to and how do we can, make sure we continue that to get those results that we're looking in a partnership and those that may not, on council may not have some direct connectivity to the mantis unit or understand what that is. That might be something that we look at as we're talking these discussions. Is there some information, brief presentation or material that we should have on that for a council to understand potentially in a work session? On the fire side, of course, it's response, fire and medical. I already mentioned the ISO and how we, how we incorporate that in our long-term and if that has budgetary benefits. The inspections that are done through the fire department and how we're maintaining or where we're at with that and where we, how that fits within the personnel assigned, training coordination we've talked about before. And then I think it came up in the city manager's comment and I'll just say in relation to mutual aid and, and really the structure of operations in, in the, in the future. With that, I, the staffing levels that are currently set, I think is an important review, probably as we continue to move forward and maybe it's a broad discussion at the next, a work session prior to the next meeting. What is the staffing levels currently on the police and the fire side? What, and how do we, how do we maintain that and how does it work together and what are we looking for? As I said, what are some of the changes to expect and what might be some projects and programs that the chiefs should be, and hopefully will be moving forward with us and some discussion on staffing. So, because that is the item that is the largest in the General Fund and clearly it was placed out here this evening when you talk about what could be reductions of, of General Fund revenues, whether it's, you know, primarily the, the large item that was clearly stated was on the DTE side. And we have to prepare and plan for that. And how we continue to do that, I think the city manager's kind of put something out to say what the, the appropriate in justice fashion is to do that over the years to come. And it's not, we just can't wait. We can't wait and say, well, we'll see what happens at the end of it and be there three years and try to find the revenue that might have to be accounted for. It's, it's where we are today and what we have to make answers and decisions on today. So this is some of my comments. I think I'd like to, as we move forward, I think there may be, as was offered by Mr. Sell, and I know what the city manager will take comments from the council members, there might be follow-up questions. I probably have a few as well. I just want to kind of give a broad perspective tonight and how we are, and how we're moving forward. I've got all kinds of notes here and I almost have to go through it myself again, just to, to think about might be some specific things and clarifications. And, and I, I would forward those to the city manager to bring back in our discussion and in the course of the next council meeting. So I don't know if there's other, if there's specific questions or comments from council members now? If not, please make sure you get a hold, but I'll take any, or take any comments or look for those now.
So if we have questions as we dig through this, contact Vince.
Yes, you would send those through to Mr. Pastu and he would share those with council. And if an item came up on this topic and he'll give an answer in general. It really, I'm looking at Mr. Buds and our attorney and of course the city manager, there's nothing wrong with council knowing, but I think if it's done that way, then we know that he's getting information back to us and it gets away from potentially side conversations or electronic communications that seem to be a quorum, which we don't want to have, it shouldn't be done that way. Nothing wrong with sending it through, then the city manager will say, I've received an inquiry for a council member on this. And just so you're, the, everybody has the same information at the same time and we're prepared as we come forward. So that's, that's the, the best way. If there's things that you specifically have tonight, it's nothing wrong with saying, I'd like to see that coming forward to the next meeting. Maybe an item, it could be anything that, that was presented as far as whether it's a funding item, whether it's a staffing item, whether it's operationally, there was, there's so much here in a first blush, it's, it's, it gets pretty overwhelming, but on the same token, it's where we have to start. So if those individual things, and I know that Mr. Pastu and Mr. Sell will have those to see where the funds are and where, maybe just clarification of a type of a fund. I think the discussion on the reserve balances and that should help us understand what may be there and why we just don't go there and spend money. But yet the idea is there's revenues that are there for the right time, what those percentages that Mr. Sell, you know, is in, wearing a comfortable position, but we just can't spend and think we'll just push it down the road. That's not been a, it's not been a, a matter of the City of Monroe for many, many years and, and that's why we're not in some dire straits that other communities seem to be in as well. So, long answer, but yes, this is a good answer. Councilman Lamore, I think you might have had a question?
Well, not necessarily a question, but you know, maybe some condolences to Mr. Leroy. You, you've got a tough task ahead of you, I know, from what's You, you've got a tough task ahead of you, I know, from what's upcoming here with all of the standards you have to meet. You've done an excellent job up to this date, just maintaining the apartment as you have and, and keeping our water clean and safe. I compliment you for that. As well as on the, the port side, which I am liaison to, we went over the budget in our last meeting as Mr. Sell said, and, and Paul does an excellent, excellent job down there, and, and he, I, I don't know how he does it and the hours he maintains, but he is, he is basically taking something from nothing and made it, made it just an absolute gem down there, as, as we will see in the future years, for sure. But, yeah, I, I will have some, some questions that I want to address to, to Vince, and, and we will discuss those. And lastly, just basically say happy Easter, everybody.
You know, the, I, I think of the, the DDA budget was here that was presented to council previously, so that's available as well to the public. I think that that's some great strides forward. I want to thank Annette, but also the, the board for that, as, as we, they start to make that big transition of looking to the future with a different, I'll just say, vision of what, what, and how that can be a help in the transformation when we talk about the development in the downtown. I, I do want to thank the staff for all the, the work of putting together their budgets, meeting with the city manager and finance director to get this presentation at this point. We, I know we'll have some further discussions. I don't want to forget our clerk treasurer, Lavoy, is part of our, our city government team, as I say, as our elected official and the clerk treasurer. I know you've also had opportunities to meet, and, and we're going to, there may be other input that comes from their conversations with the clerk treasurer Lavoy as well. So I always give Michelle the opportunity, if there's something today, because her budget also is important. And she says, may she, while she may not vote here, she is a member of the team as far as how we look at this collectively, because in our budget was the, the discussion in, in that department with the city manager as far as staffing and combining resources and combining tasks, as we look at all departments is there. So I don't know if Michelle has anything you had to say this evening? If not, I know you'll pass it on.
Sure. I guess I would just say that Vince and I have been working on the, the items that he brought up tonight about the clerk treasurer's office, but if anyone has any questions as to the, what we're thinking about to make that office, I think, more efficient in terms of responsiveness to customers and the changes that continue to happen, both on the clerk's side and the treasurer's side, we'll be glad to, to field those calls, so please give me a call as well.
Thank you. You know, if there's some items that might be within the other departments, say, it is, you know, because the city manager, that is his task to manage in our operations, and that's why we have a city manager. So I'd ask that they just make sure you forward those on to, to Vince, because we, if, if all of us start having contacts with individual department heads, then they're trying to service all of us individually, and it really doesn't work out as well. But by having Vince as the, as he is, the point of contact for the operations side, it really helps get an answer that we all hear collectively and not hear something different just from a conversation that might be. Let's never say you can't have a conversation with staff, we know that, but really, a lot of the details and operational things is, is why we have this forum here within our city, and I think works wonderfully. So I'm going to stop talking if there's Vince, if you have some comments, because I could go on, there's so much here. Vince?
At our last work session, I did ask the question, this is again, this is kind of synthesizing down to the brief, as we can, there's a lot more detail behind it that goes with developing the budget. But I asked the question, how much, you know, when you want to go through with departments, which has been done in the past, are there specific departments you want to focus on, those type of things? After going through this tonight, particularly with our newer council members, I, you know, give it some thought and consideration. The other thing with it is, is that the charter is, gives us a very limited time to do this. I, just by way of example, I'm used to having a requirement whereby, by the end of March, I have to give you a, the council proposed budget, but you don't have to adopt it until June. We got like almost a three, four week period to, to get this to you at hand. And so the charter is very, very challenging in that regard for us. But there's still, we can make some time if we need to do some, some workshops to go through that if that's your desire. And again, in the interest of everyone's time, if there are specific areas or departments, just, just let me know, and we can try and schedule it. And I know I only got one member that'll be going probably the week of the second. We still have the week of the ninth in, to, to meet if we had to.
Very good. If there's other questions from council members? Not? We just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. And thank you all for being here.